Good evening, welcome to the Select Board Meeting. Today is December 3rd, 2019. We're airing on Comcast, Channel 22, and Rise and Channel 33. Tonight's agenda will have liaison reports, Town Manager report, and public comment. We have a hearing to have a name change of Arcasa. We'll be appointing a Board of Registrar. We have some licenses and liquor licenses for approval. We also will be approving a pledge of collateral from Liquor Junction. We'll have a presentation from the Facilities Department on passing future energy improvements, an update from HR, Employee Retention and Attraction, a hearing from PT TTF, and then we'll move on to future agendas and minutes. So why don't we start with liaison reports? Andy, I'll start with you.
Okay. I have, thanks Vanessa. I have three items, forgive me for reading them. The first is about dementia-friendly Redding. Prior or last meeting, the Board received an email from Brian Snell asking us to support and acknowledge the efforts of dementia-friendly Redding, a group dedicated to making Redding a more dementia-friendly community. I'm wondering if any one of us has followed up on this request specifically regarding the Board acknowledging dementia-friendly Redding perhaps through a proclamation or something. So I know we're working through our communications policy, but has anyone, anyway, so you can answer during your report. If not, I'd be happy to work on it. The other thing is an update on the independent gas leak article that Town Meeting was generous enough to approve. I spoke to David Zeke, I've been speaking to David Zeke about the independent audit, and the plan as was explained at Town Meeting is to hire a consultant to complete a Phase 1, which is a driving survey along roadways to find gas leaks. Then the data, that data will be then used to develop a plan for Phase 2. David's recommendation is that he and I set up a meeting with the Town Manager and the consultant Bob Ackley, which David can tell you more about, or I could, to discuss the Phase 1, the cost of which would be about $5,000. David did say he preferred I attend this meeting as someone with a strong background in sciences and environmental testing. I'd like to ask the Board permission to continue to stay involved in this, both in the planning and execution of Phases 1 and 2, as well as continue to represent the Board in the multi-Town Gas Leak Initiative. So something to chew on there. The MET, the development across from the train stations, 40B Building located across Lincoln Street from the depot. As you know, the developer was recently cited with two violations of the comprehensive permit. The violations pertaining to lighting fixtures in the garage, I'm sorry, the violations pertain to lighting fixtures in the garage and paving of an area that was dedicated to landscaping, including trees that would buffer the building from an abutting residence. Yesterday, I forwarded to the Board, you've all seen it, an email from a resident that was sent on November 26th to the Planning Department. The resident asks if a number of other permit requirements will be addressed, including snow removal, because the building now hangs a little bit over the, farther out over the sidewalk than they had originally planned, and the clear demarcation of the loading zone and others. It's a long comprehensive permit. Bob sent you the Assistant Town Manager's response stating that the Building Commissioner is withholding the final certificate of occupancy until he is satisfied that the project complies with the comprehensive permit. To clarify, the certificate of occupancy will be withheld until the applicant either complies with the existing permit or obtains a variance from the ZBA. Given the history of this development, to which I'm the liaison vis-à-vis the permit, I asked the Assistant Town Manager if the Town could either require either a certification from the Civil Engineer, Architect, and General Contractor that describes all the changes to the comp permit, or a certified copy of the as-built plans that can be compared to the plans of the comp permit. Either of these requirements or both would make any deviations from the permit, the comprehensive permit, transparent to all and would be similar to the Planning Department's procedure developed within the past year of requiring a certified plan of the concrete pore prior to allowing above-ground construction. And also, some of you may have noticed that the ZBA does have the MET on the agenda for Wednesday night, and so it's, I feel it important that we, that the Town understand what deviations the builder has taken from the comprehensive permit, and we've been waiting for a response from the Assistant Town Manager, or Bob, maybe you can address this, about whether we can, we can require them to give these sort of certificates that would make it clear what changes from the original comp permit they've made or plan to make. And that is it.
Two things. One, Bob, I noticed that in your note to us, there's the Redding Shield with a sword in hand, followed by limpy on the other side. I'm not sure that that's the right message.
Well, one of your members suggested it was.
On a more serious note, a lot of activities. Last night, the RMLD, RMLB had a meeting, and there was a discussion that took place about the payment to the Town of Redding going forward. And the RMLB has it very much in their sights to resolve this issue quickly, soon. The RMLD had a consultant provide a report that compared other municipal utilities to look at how much they're contributing back to their towns. And we're a little bit unique because RMLD services multiple towns, and obviously has a lot more infrastructure as a result. But the net is that their report indicated a number that is substantially lower than what we are accustomed to right now. And the RMLB has decided that the process that they want to follow is to first have the RMLB have a discussion about making a recommendation. They'll take it to the Citizens Advisory Board and have the Citizens Advisory Board work with the recommendation as well. And they want to come forward with the recommendation and then open the process up to more public discussion after they've done those things. And this is likely to be on an accelerated agenda. I believe that the General Manager of RMLD will by next week post on the website what the recommendation is that came from the consultant. The Board will separately decide what it is that they want to do, but they want to put this onto a fast track, and then the public comment would be kind of after they've done those pieces. So that's a bit of a change, I think, from how we had envisioned, but they're very committed to getting this done in short order. The numbers that were presented aren't quite correct because the driver for some of these changes is that RMLD would like to invest in a lot more capital, and that would increase the net assets, and that would increase part of the payment that is happening. But the decrease in payments they're suggesting is much stronger than that, an order of magnitude of half a million dollars a year difference. So I think that's something we'll want to obviously participate in.
Sorry to interrupt, just wanted to ask a question. Did they discuss that this would perhaps change as soon as next July 1st, that fiscal year?
There was no discussion of when it would go into place, but...
Because it's important for us to know this when.
Right. So the consultant presented a five-year transition period?
Okay.
So that the impact would change kind of per year, so it wouldn't be a one-year thing. I don't know what the Board has in mind, but the second year of our two-year agreement will be expiring in June, or sooner?
I think there's one more year, so I thought that next July 1st freeze was still agreed to.
There was absolutely no discussion of that.
Back and forth. Thank you.
That's it.
I just wanted to draw a fellow Board member's attention to the email that Andy had forwarded from the Sheriff of Porto to help Emmy Dove providing feedback to us on the feedback we had provided to them on the draft pesticide regulations. So they're not finalized yet, but they did consider the feedback we've given them, and they have a response that Emmy provided to us by email. I also, this isn't exactly a liaison report, but several of us had the good fortune to attend on Friday the dedication of the Service's timeless clock in memory of Camille Anthony, who served on this board for 18 years. It was a beautiful event, it's a beautiful clock, and many thanks to Meegen Young and to the Redding Rotary Club for making it happen so quickly. And it's really lovely, it's down at the Train Depot, and you can see just on the face of the, on two of the faces of the clock, it says "In Memory of Camille Anthony," and on the other two faces it says "Service is Timeless," and so you know what it's about without even having to go up to read the block, which is also beautifully written.
Thank you. So I attended the Recreation Meeting on November 20th. There had been a request for REC to recommend opening up Sunday hours at Birch Meadow that was not, they voted against that, so they have not made a recommendation. I see some softball people in the audience, we might be hearing from them in a little bit. I also want to just take a moment and recognize Facilities and TPW for their excellent work in the snow removal in the last couple of days. The roads are fantastic, so thank you very much for all your hard work. Okay. So Bob?
I agree with you on TPW, thanks. Just one quick thing and one pretty important thing. The Town Clerk doesn't have a name tonight for the Board of Registrar, so the Board can skip that agenda item. A somewhat serious issue, which does not affect your liquor renewal licenses later, is a discussion I had with the Fire Chief today that's been ongoing for a few weeks about occupancy limits at bars, especially restaurant bars. On the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, which is a very popular night for people returning to Town and seeing their friends, both the Fire Chief and Assistant Fire Chief contacted a handful of spots that had a reputation for being too crowded. One of them, despite the capacity of 125, was reported to have about 300 people that met. A fight broke out, the police were not able to get into the establishment. God help us if that was a fire. We have contacted the ABCC today. We are also working with Town Council to see what steps the Town should take or has available to take. But I was assured that even though the ABCC could get involved, it is not like a license renewal problem for you, but for the community, it's very dangerous to be in a 125-person place with 300 of you. Fun is fun, that's just very dangerous. And I was really disappointed that the establishment had been warned that day and didn't do anything about it. So that's all.
Bob, is your mic on?
Yeah. That's all. Thank you.
That should make a comment. I'm glad that you brought that up, Bob. I completely agree, we need to look into that. The other side of that is, I'm really concerned that we had two pretty substantial altercations take place on that evening where people were hurt. And I don't know how to, we should talk about it, but we know that unfortunately that night has a reputation for having a lot of people, and it may be worth thinking about how to better, what we can do to better protect everyone involved as well as the community.
Bob, if I could just ask, if you've had a chance to follow up, I assume we have 40B experts at our disposal, if you've been able to follow up on my request for, to see if we could get a certification from the Civil Engineer, et cetera, that describes the changes to the comp permit, so the Board is aware of them?
At the advice of Council, I'm not responding to anything until after tomorrow when ZBA holds a formal process. That was the advice I was giving.
So, let me just, the building, or the inspector, planning and building inspections, Building Commissioner, they fall under...
Let me be clear.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Staff has no authority right now whatsoever. It's all on the ZBA. The ZBA can instruct the Building Commissioner what to do or not to. Your questions can't be answered by staff. That's what I was telling you when I responded.
So I'm asking you.
No, I'm going to pause this for just a moment. Why don't we table this, and we can bring this up at the end of the agenda?
Okay.
There was an email that came through just today about this, and so we can put that under the, under 48 Hours item on the agenda, but let's move along. But I have questions as well, so let's just table those.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right, so we'll open it up to public comment. Please raise your hand, provide your name and address. Please keep topics under the purview of the Board. And please, no derogatory or campaign-related comments. Ms. Brad?
At your first time reading this year, you mentioned something about having to have instructional motions. When people weren't something done, they couldn't make an instructional motion. A year and a half ago, I made an instructional motion to report the Town meeting the use of Memorial Park. That has not been done. And I think it should be for several reasons. Number one, I think people have the right to know exactly what can and cannot be done on that thing. And as I keep saying, you're putting the burden on the administrative and not on government. They was getting very strict rules. I talked to her several times, she says, "Well, I understand that's not authorized for it." That's not what the deed says. I'm going to suggest very strongly that you talk to the Attorney General's Office and let's get a great moment and support, because you know, I would write up a letter to them if I want to resolve the issue on the other. On a nice note, the plaque is on the cycle, and I'm going to think while, levitate the health certificate, and each one of them is a Thursday, a day, a week.
Thank you, Bob.
Also, going back to the old crowd, I'm old enough to remember the coconut grove fight, and I don't want to see that happen again.
Thank you. Bob?
Carl, I'm very grateful to you, to Camille Anthony's son-in-law. I just from the apple field, I just want to say thank you to Jane and Ryan, because when the project was first there, I mean, they're tremendous, I can be a little pushy, shall we say, at times. Didn't know how to get it done, but with Bob and his, like, I mean, they were phenomenal. It was amazing where last week, I think when Jane said, "It's supposed to be scheduled for when?" I'm like, you're like, three days from now, it takes to get done, and they moved mountains, and they dug up the road, and it was amazing. And I just want to thank everyone publicly for all their hard work and their tremendous job. And another thing, the references with RMLB, they pay for the consultant, right, to get the report?
I would imagine so. I don't know the answer.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Larry Hurley, 274 Ash Street, the Vice President of the Redding Softball Little League. We were, after our committee meeting, as you've stated, we were there for two reasons. One was the opening of Sunday mornings at Birch Meadow. We had also, what we really were asking for was the opening for four Sundays at Birch Meadow in the spring. The reason being, our season is seven weeks long. Three of those Sundays are Mother's Day, Memorial Day, and the graduation, which we are not allowed at all that day. You can't use more than four, we're in limited time. The weather has been, this is going to be our fourth season. The weather has been bad every season. Last season, we had to cancel over, postpone over 70 games. We had 60% of our season had to be rescheduled. Thankfully, we did have Kill 'Em, which was a lifesaver, as much as it isn't a great field, it was playable at times. We still had to play doubleheader, it was a lock towards the end. We have already cut games before last season. We're not here because we want to be here, we're here because there is a need. You know, the weather, that's what spring is in New England now, unfortunately. That's not going to change. A late start's at the high school now for during the week when we have games. But varsity and JV games are going to start later, which means it's going to get into our time. We have to be off the fields by a certain time on the lighted field for another organization, and because of darkness, the other two fields become unplayable. We're looking for, the REC Committee was generous enough to give us the one Sunday they are allowed to give us. They gave us May 31st. We are asking for 426, 53, and 517, which would be the other three, which is one of the Select Board's curbs. We're hoping, you know, that we can get on the agenda to discuss this further. Also, you know, the biggest issue that our families have all had with this is the high school fields, the turfs, are under separate jurisdiction, and there are some organizations that get to use the field of 412 on Sunday on those. And, you know, the girls in this town deserve some fight for them, and they're here to do that. You know, what we're looking for is consistency all around. Jenna had contacted peer communities a couple of years ago, 29, I believe, out of 30 were Sunday morning use. We're not looking to turn the whole town upside down, we were looking for Birch Meadow softball fields. We're not looking to go with Sturgis, or any of the other fields. You know, we'd like that to be considered, and the REC mission statement, you know, it does say to adapt in there, adapt to the community's needs, and we'd like to see that done. The REC Committee does not have the authority to do just that, that's on you, and I respectfully ask that you close on the agenda for further conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Yes?
I'm Bob Hayes, 739 Pearl Street, President of the Redding Softball. In addition to Larry's comments, I'd just like to add a few things for either clarity or expansion. Bottom problem is waiting, as has been suggested, until a point of need shows up. There's just simply the bureaucratic process of getting through the REC Committee's meeting schedule and then your agenda. When we know it's going to rain, we don't have time. So last year, and not last year, the year before, we started this, I believe in like February, March. We got the approval from the Board for just that year only. We had Kill 'Em last year, we thought would be okay, we still had to cancel or reschedule 65% of our games. I'll promise, this is an all-Redding girls league, it's an instructional league, and it's exactly what we want to be. When we first started this league, four years ago, the league had 140 players. The first year we took it over, it had 250. Second year, it had 296. Last year, we had 315 girls. Our early bird sign-up and our registration right now is almost at 300. And this isn't just a matter of need because we want to expand the league and grow crazy, that's something we're trying to do, but we need to accommodate the girls that we have playing for us. And when we think of the fact that the boys' baseball league in Town had grown to over 600 players in one year, it's kind of frustrating when you hear people make comments like, "You've got to downsize, you want to, you know, limit the amount of people who can play." I think some of the things like these early starts on Sundays help us tremendously if we don't get a lot of rain, which has never been the case in New England, I've been here my whole life, in the spring, we wouldn't have to deal with this issue as often as we do. And the other thing, a little kind of patting our back here, we as an organization, I think we've proven ourselves as a critically-minded organization. We have done community food drives in our championship days, we've donated new uniforms to the girls softball team, and as many people know, we run a lot of clinics that break even or less for girls, whether it be fielding, pitching, hitting, and whatnot. And anybody here, and I hope you've seen it, has looked at the $50,000 investment we just made in pre-doing Sturgis. This is not to suggest in any way that we as a league need special treatment, that's not what we're looking for. But we're very proud of the product that we put here. This is a great community-based program. We're trying to keep it as rock solid as possible, we want to make sure the girls have a great experience, and so far, I think we've done a pretty good job. So these early Sunday morning starts are really very important to the league, and there is no waiting until the time we need them, because then it's just impossible. This is an ongoing issue, it's been happening way too long, it's just, it's crazy, it's antiquated law about early starts, and if we get on the agenda soon, we think it's effective, at least for these three Sundays. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. So Bob, are you moving on to the hearing?
Sure.
Do we have a hearing notice?
Yes, I have it. Wait one second, I have to shift. Sorry, one second, figure out where I put it. It doesn't want to make itself available. I got it. "To the inhabitants of the Town of Redding, please take notice that the Select Board of the Town of Redding will hold a public hearing on December 3rd, 2019, at 7:20 PM in the Select Board's meeting room, 16 Lowell Street, Redding, Massachusetts, to amend the FY20 classification plan. A copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the Town Manager's office, 16 Lowell Street, Redding, Mass., Monday, Wednesday, Thursdays, from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Tuesday from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM, and will be in the Select Board meeting packet posted at www.reddingma.gov on Wednesday, November 27th, 2019. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 4:00 PM on December 3rd, 2019 to townmanager@ci.redding.ma.us." By order of Robert W. Lelashir, Town Manager.
Great. Bob?
Thank you, I think this request is quite simple. The Arcasa Board has been meeting since the end of the Frederick Grant, which was October 1st, to map out a plan to go ahead. They expect to perhaps make a final vote later this month on what that path will be. And when they do that, I'll certainly report that to the Board. John Halsey, Assistant Liaison, has been attending. For now, the only vote that the group has made is to change the name from Redding Coalition Against Substance Abuse, known as Arcasa, to instead be Redding Coalition for Prevention and Support. And they've also discussed just calling it Redding Coalition for short. I'll just quickly summarize that instead of being against something, being for something was highly on everyone's mind, that they wanted to be for something, and support is more than just substance abuse support, it's a mental health, it's a broadening of the mission, if you will. So the request in front of you is simply to remove the word "Arcasa" from three job descriptions, two of which are filled, one of which is vacant, and not funded, to instead use the word "coalition" for what it's all.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the Board before we move to public comment? Any public comment on the hearing? Very none. Why don't we close the hearing? Do you have a motion?
Move that the Select Board close the hearing on the FY20 classification plan.
For a second?
Yes, second.
Call those in favor. Great. So assuming there's no discussion, can you make the motion, Mark, to approve?
Move that the Select Board approve the FY20 classification plan as presented.
For a second?
Second.
Call those in favor? Great. Motion carries. Um, nice. Bob?
Okay, so the 7:30 agenda item is not necessary?
Mm-hmm.
Meaning or has schedule?
That's awesome.
Find out how that works.
Yeah. Move right into licenses again. We had no problems with any of the licenses in terms of further discussion. From past discussions, these are motions that do need to be fully read, sorry, Mark. They're pretty extensive. Just move the dispensary.
Oh, two-sided?
Yes.
So much.
Okay.
All right. Is there...
Just a question. So Bob, you said earlier on that in the discussion about the occupancy issues, that does not relate to the licenses, is that correct?
Correct. It would not be a condition that would violate an alcohol license per se.
Got it. Can I ask two questions? One is, I think we should put this on a future agenda, that's probably the more important one. But the other is, in a circumstance like that, does the Fire Chief or the Police Chief have the authority to close down an establishment for that?
Fire Chief does.
Yes, yes. Bring the occupancy down to what we are licensed by the building inspector to have. And the occupancy number is set by the architect, for the, for the design of the occupancy, based upon the use, and then the building inspector accepts it or not, and as opposed to be required to impose. We can by Chapter 148, bring it down to what the occupancy number is at.
I'm going to suggest that we have a discussion about this on a future agenda.
I'm going to suggest that we have a discussion about this on a, at a future agenda.
Just want to also note the deputy chief was, is that an emergency that he will be here? He may or may not be able to join us.
Bob?
Deputy Police Chief?
Yes.
Bob, could I ask you to make a note to include this as a potential future agenda item? Thank you. Unless there's any further discussion, if you want to start?
What?
Oh, wait. Yes.
Earlier this year, there was some question about the ABCC coming in to look at possible violations of their, you know, not under, not a town, a town inspection, but an ABCC inspection. Is that not relevant to what?
The board is allowed to consider that, but the penalties they impose were just written warnings. So that's not really much teeth for you to consider, from what I understand.
Okay.
All right. Can I ask another question?
Right.
So we've approved new, or new changes that are effective Gen 1? Is that right? How and when do those get published? Do we publish in advance of that date? Or I'm just wondering, what's the mechanism?
We just got the final draft, I think, this week.
Yeah.
From February. They don't need to be published per se, but they will certainly be circulated to all the license holders, just to be safe.
I could send them out and renewals.
Yeah, and they'll be on the website.
I think that's a great idea to send them out.
License, I could put a copy of the policy in there.
Yes, please. Yeah.
We also perhaps include a note, even if it's brief, says, note, changes to sections X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
To just draw their attention to it. Andy?
So we're about to renew a bunch of licenses for establishments, one of which there was a fight of a number of 22-year-olds, which may or may not have been influenced by alcohol for a license that we're about to renew. Is it, is it possible to, for the board to hold off on that particular license and, and have a conversation with the owner about the importance of, you know, if they want to keep the license? And I'm, if Bob would let me know if I'm off base here, but that they stick to the, stick to the occupancy requirements. I don't know if we can make the connection or not. Yes?
Yeah. I'm a lawyer, but the only way I can imagine that even happening would be for you to do whatever business you can complete tonight, but continue the hearing to a date certain this month, as we want to get three budget meetings. And then maybe we, and not tomorrow night, then maybe one of the days next week, we can have town council and the owner here. I don't know beyond that. We have to drill teeth there.
To clarify, is this, was the occupancy violation, is that a frequent occurrence at that establishment?
Have you heard? I haven't heard that. I would know, but I've heard of it before Wednesday night, absolutely before that.
We're putting on a radio. We received a phone call from, from the police department concerned that there were some establishments in town that have overcrowding issue or had, had overcrowding issues. So based upon that, because it was late in the day, later in the day, we called all of those establishments, told them that we may be coming out to a compliance check, and told them that they're, they have specific occupancy numbers that are supposed to be posted, and that they're not to receive. And also informed them of the master of law, chapter 148, who stood for the raid, that has specific fines. Fines in there is up to $5,000 for the. So the assistant chief called each one of them and asked to speak to the manager, gave them that information, and had a conversation. One of them called back and I ended up talking to them, and also told them of our concerns, and that we may be out doing compliance check. We didn't want to surprise them. We wanted to give them notice. We wanted them to be proactive and stop the problem before it occurred. So that was, that was the reason why we took, took the step on.
And one of those establishments you ended up going out to, and in spite of your sort of reminder of the occupancy limits, they were quite a bit over. Is that right?
They responded for medically, treated the medic, treated the person, transported somebody. They cleared the scene. Police, when they were doing their investigation, they wanted to go inside the establishment, talk to maybe witnesses. And that's when, just right after front door, they commented overcrowding made it difficult for them to get inside.
Yeah.
So then they took steps to putting the occupancy down to a more safer.
So my only concern is that, that is to, is, would be to vote to approve a license for this establishment?
That's important.
Question first, if I could. Is it only one establishment we're talking about?
I've heard two fights tonight. I don't know about the second one. So I think.
Okay, so that tells us a second location.
Caution the board. And again, I don't, I don't believe in parts, but this establishment has not been publicly named. There is an active investigation. I don't know what you did.
Once we issue the license, if there is a violation, the future actions that can be taken are fines, correct?
Yeah. The board issuing a license has no bearing whatsoever on measures the board may wish to take against that establishment, and is completely unrelated to what the fire chief may, may do.
I'd be inclined to move forward with approving the license renewal. And then if the board feels the need, or there is some, is a need or a recommendation combined because they're not following it, I don't want to overly penalize a business that hasn't been identified publicly over what is still an investigation in progress. I'm sort of, I'm on the fence here, but that's, that's direction I'm in.
And the new license is effective, is the new license effective immediately or January 1?
January 1.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'd be inclined to approve it also, but I think that there needs to be a way to, to address the issue. And if the ongoing investigation restricts information, that could really delay that discussion. And I think putting it up to a not date certain is probably not a good idea.
Certainly to the extent it's a future agenda item, when things are a little clearer, you can invite anyone you want into that discussion in terms of the license holder.
Yeah, I'm inclined to move forward as is, and then see what results from the investigation.
Do we have a sense of when the investigation might conclude, or when we might have more information that would be publicly available?
I just heard about it the first time today, so I'd have to say, I don't know, at least a week, in terms of getting feedback from the ABCC and the town council, having a full discussion. That seemed right.
Yeah, yes. I don't want to speak to the police.
Right. I have neither.
I don't feel, be more into the ABCC tonight. I don't, I don't have any dealings with that on how the master of law, chapter 148, section 34 is, what the rights define under that hour. I want to get a clarification from the town council.
We would expect to have some more information before these licenses take effect January 1?
The tricky part is that your last meeting this year is a week from tomorrow night.
Right.
So it has to be then, or else I was calling a meeting.
Right. Right.
I just, I can't answer that tiny question.
Well, this may be a question for legal counsel, so maybe we can add this to the list. But once a license is issued, do we have the authority to revoke the license mid-year?
Certainly, but is, you know, there's hurdles for that.
I'm sure there are hurdles, but assuming on sort of repeated violations for the occupancy. What I want to make sure is that if, if we choose to approve it today, that we have recourse next year, should there be ongoing problems, or if there's recommendation from the staff according?
You do, but this violation is really not a liquor violation proper. It's different.
Right. Right.
It's a different section. So that's why I can't answer some of your questions.
Come on.
I have just a question about the anonymity of, of the establishment. Chief Burns, is it, when you respond to provide medical assistance at an establishment, is that, is that public record, public knowledge?
Yes, there is a public law that shows where we go.
So, so technically, you know, the police investigation aside, in which I respect, it, it should be public knowledge which institution this was. Again, I, I don't want to double penalize them, Vanessa. It just gives, it gives me pause to vote for an establishment that just ignored the call from the police, had an overcrowding issue, and a fight break out. And so I don't understand why, why that information can't be made public yet, and, and, and why that can't help influence what we do tonight.
Bob?
Just to be clear, at no time did I say it could not be made public. I just said it hadn't been made. You want to say the name? You're more than.
I don't know the name. I mean, I knew the name.
I have a proposed suggestion.
Yes.
So these licenses are broken down into categories. We have package stores, clubs, veterans clubs, and then all alcohol restaurants and beer and wine restaurant licenses. What we could do is split these, so that we could vote to approve package clubs, veterans, and we could delay the all alcohol restaurants, beer and wine restaurant licenses until next Wednesday to see if there is additional information, which at, at that point, we could, if there is nothing noteworthy, we could approve en masse. If there is something noteworthy that results from the investigation, we could take that one up individually. Does that work?
I'd be fine with that.
Yeah. That would save you the reading on all of this list today.
Yeah. Just putting it off for another day.
All right. Are we, Bob, does that work for you?
Again, I can't give you a leaky legal advice. I have no idea. Mechanically, we can make that happen if you continue the hearing to a time certain.
I mean, the stipulation here is that there may be a situation where we continue hearing, and at our next meeting next Wednesday, we still don't have any additional information. And in that situation, we need to decide if we are going to vote to approve, or if we're going to continue it to a meeting that we don't have on the calendar right now, which is the week for this.
And I can get some legal advice prepared for you for Wednesday, as to whether this should or shouldn't proceed in a certain way.
Okay.
Let's do that.
That would be helpful. All right. Great. So Mark, if you can start us off with the first motion for package stores.
Move that the select board approve the all alcoholic package store liquor licenses for HT Reading Liquors LLC, DBA Bay State Liquors, 345 Main Street, Rockshaw Inc., DBA Square Liquors, 13 High Street, Jay and Ricky Inc., DBA Ricky's Liquors, 214 Main Street, and Stasi Brookline Inc., DBA Reading Fine Wine and Spirits, 25 Walkers Brook Drive, Kajal and Kevin LLC, DBA The Liquor Junction, One General Way, and Pomplamoose Inc., DBA Pomplamoose, 26 Haven Street, for a term expiring December 31, 2020, subject to the following conditions. All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Clubs?
Move that the select board approve the all alcoholic club liquor licenses for Meadowbrook Golf Corp. of Reading, Mass., DBA Meadowbrook Golf Club, 292 Grove Street, Home Building Corp., DBA Knights of Columbus, 11 Sanborn Street, for a term expiring December 31, 2020, subject to the following conditions. All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Veterans clubs?
Move that the select board approve the all alcoholic veteran club liquor licenses for Reading Veterans Association Inc., DBA American Legion Post 62, 37 Ash Street, for a term expiring December 31, 2020, subject to the following conditions. All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. And so we will continue the hearing to, oh, yes, Bob?
Sorry, I just wanted to ask you any question.
Sure.
I remember running into a problem when we continued the hearing to a different building, which this would be. So I'll have to give a legal medium on that. So the board could continue to Wednesday, December 11, at 7:00 AM, the Pleasant Street Center, which is where you're going to be posted to meet. I think that'll work. One thing you could do, which is going to sound weird, is continue it to tomorrow night, when I can have an answer for a meeting you need to meet for the continuation. You can continue it to Pleasant Street Center tomorrow night, but it's going to get me too complicated. So I just don't know if legally you can continue a meeting to a different building. I think we've run into an issue with that before. I'm going to need town council's advice.
Uh, okay. So.
I will suggest 7 o'clock, right at, right at the start of the meeting, let's go with Pleasant Street Center.
And 7:00 PM.
Yeah, right. Gave me a little bit of heart palpitations.
In the event that we are, we cannot legally continue it at a different building.
I think you can change that tomorrow night.
We can change that and say, for example, 6:30 here.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay. Great. So let's continue the hearing to
I think that's December.
Wednesday, December 11, at 7:00 PM at the Pleasant Street Senior Center. All right. So now the licenses, the liquor licenses.
Pledge of collateral.
We have the pledge of collateral for Liquor Junction. Any background information here for us, Bob?
No, it's not something we see a lot, but it was retained. Police did a background check. It's lying. It's just me to approve.
Any questions from the board? Your motion?
Move that the select board approve the pledge of collateral application for Liquor Junction. Am I reading the right one? Yes. One General Way, Reading, Massachusetts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. So next, uh, Bob?
Ask that you swap the next two ones around. Have the HR one first, easier.
Okay. So next up, we will have Judy Perkins from HR talking to us about employee attraction, retention, and training opportunities.
Well, thank you very much. Happy pleasure meeting you. Nice to meet you.
Hello? And Judy, before you get started, no, please, please feel free. Bob, can we turn down the heat?
We can open a window. It's a plan B, but.
I'd save that comment for the next director next.
Layers. Layers.
One day, if I'm in a really heavy sweater.
I can crack the door if I really need it.
Is that off now?
Everything is off.
Okay, great. All right, Judy, all yours. Great. I'm going to condense HR into about 15 minutes for you folks. How's that? I'm going to do the best that I can to show you what it is that we're trying to do with regards to leadership, retention of employees, and what our basic philosophies are. I'm going to hand it out to some of the department heads in here, because this is some of the training that we're putting into place for them. Everything starts from leadership down. So I'm going to try and entertain you for a few minutes and let these first videos speak for themselves. They're only a few minutes long, so if you can't hear them, please let me know.
Imagine a team of people that cares to make things better continually. Every day, every opportunity, your team. Where would it begin? Where would it begin? Here's an idea. Model, connect, involve. Model the behavior you want to see. Connect with the people you lead. Involve them wherever you can. See that? Three simple actions that feed everything else. Be what it is you want to see more of. Do what it is you want everyone else to do. Think about that. What is it you want to see from your team? More enthusiasm, less cynicism, more results, less business, more objectivity, less wishing and guessing. How about more focus and less distraction? More kindness, truth, humility, less ego, more time, effort, care. Whatever it is you feel is most important to creating that better experience for everyone. Whatever you feel will bring the Whatever you feel will bring the best results. That's what you want to model, regardless of circumstances, exceptions. You're the leader, it's your tone to set, and we lead by example, one way or the other. Model what it is you want to see. Connect and involve. Give people the time you'd like to be given. Let them know you've got their back and appreciate them. Talk, listen, show, share. Connecting is how you'll hear things sooner rather than later. Connecting is how you'll learn more, inspire more, and how you'll encourage people to make better things happen. Have more frequent and meaningful conversations about what it is you and your team do and the value you bring to the world. Show people the big picture more often and help them connect to it personally. Invite people to see things from your view, your vantage point, so they're more informed and get better at solving problems with you and without you. You want stronger people, future leaders? You've got to involve them more now in solving the challenges you face. Wherever you can, let somebody else lead the effort to make something good happen. Think about it. When we're more involved in something, we're more responsible to it, and we care more, right? Remember, each of us, every day, has these one-second opportunities. One-second opportunities where we can change everything with a little more patience, a little more encouragement, a little more connection, a little more involvement. Leadership, it's really not complex. It's simply caring about the people we work with, involving them the way we'd like to be involved, treating them the way we'd like to be treated. Not rocket science, just the gold. Model the behavior you want to see. Connect with the people you lead. Involve them wherever you care. Isn't it time to make more good things happen for everyone?
That's just a break training video for our leaders, and obviously, we know that if we can't lead by example, we can have some issues with retention. So bringing folks on, especially into the public arena, can be a little bit of a challenge. We don't have quite as many people wanting to enter public services we used to, you know, two decades ago and beyond. So when we're bringing new people in, this is part of our new onboarding process. It's called Smile and Move. Just a brief affirmation of what we'd like to see more from our employees, and I think we have a pretty good group of folks here that do that. But in order to get a little bit more into what it is that HR does here, because we do have our hands in a lot of things, I'm going to just play a brief eight-minute video for you that kind of gives you eight minutes' worth of HR, jam-packed. How's that? We'll just narrate a couple of things for you. Just meeting a few of our employees. I'd just like to say that the Redding residents are very fortunate to have this group of people working for them. They are a great group of folks. Now, a little bit about what we're hiring. We do use the MMA to rabatize initially, and when that doesn't seem to suit our needs, we certainly use things like Indeed. And I do fairs as well. We'll use Glass Door every once in a while, but we also use an organization called Handshake. It's a partnership between colleges where we have access to their graduating students and alumni. These are just a few of the colleges that we have access to. And certainly, once we gather the resumes, we want to have a lot of applicants. It's never too little. We had over 1,064 applicants last year. We did over 500 core checks. We sent over 240 people for pre-employment and fit for duty exams. We certainly look at everything for competence and look closely at the individual, and then we say, okay, welcome to Redding. And when that happens, we start onboarding. And our onboarding process starts with the I-9 and then a number of things that go with them, including their benefits. We've got a pretty active safety committee as well. Trying to get us all our library boards that we can possibly get. So we say, okay, welcome to Redding. You're on board. Now let's move forward with some training. Certainly, a lot of focus is on customer service. These micro trainings are delivered to everybody's desktop, and these are some of the issues that we train them on immediately when they come in the door. Beyond the Kennedy training, we also have Local GovU that's developed specifically for municipal employees, and there's a number of trainings that they have. This is just a sample. Unfortunately, we've got to talk about that as well. And Fred Fryer is another training organization that we use mostly for professional development. They have thousands of programs that are available, both on your desktop and on-site. These are just a sample. And on my base trainings, we start with some wellness. We use the classes that we've had in this past year that our employees have been involved in. Tuesday trail walks. Our town manager has actually joined us. And there are a few other things that we're ready to get our hands into. It's pretty busy. Certainly, employee wellness is one of them. To the chagrin of the town manager, I did have a wellness fair. It was very good. We had a full clinic, great turnout. We held it at the library. I'm also training the trainer. I'm certified for D O C A D. We've done a lot of sexual harassment training this past year. Everybody in the town's been great. We also have to deal with ADA and deal with disabilities. Some are physical, some are not. Jan is a great resource for finding out reasonable combinations in the workplace. And the obvious things, we need to maintain employee records. Place investigations. We always like to ask these things twice because you never know. The workers' comp. And when it comes to public safety, we're fully self-insured, and that gets into a whole other realm, gets us into the medical billing process. I'm actually the adjuster, so I have to read medical notes and what have you. There's a lot that goes on there. We touch about 1,700 people. We service them for benefits, and that includes all retirees, teacher retirees, department, RMLD, and town. And we've recently done a post-65 transition for some of the folks that weren't qualified in Medicare. We worked them through that process and got them into a new program and helped save a lot of money. Unfortunately, we do have to deal with terminations as well. What we've been doing a lot of exit interviews. Our job is to help people navigate the rough waters of employment, set them in the right direction. Hopefully, they're going on the right course, but when they hit rough waters, we're there to help them navigate the way to the right pathway and find their way. And thank you very much. That is my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I know there's a lot inside of eight minutes, but I wanted to keep it brief.
Thank you for that, Judy. Any questions? Actually, I have a question, and then I'll hand it over. You mentioned right at the end there, reviewing of medical records.
Yeah.
So can you clarify what that means in terms of what you have access to as far as employees' medical records?
When it comes to public safety, I'm actually the adjuster for the insurance company, because technically, my office is an insurance agency at that point. And I do review medical records. I do look at them and see if the treatment is appropriate for what the injury is. And when I have a question, I send it off to our town physician so they can look at it and see if there's need to send anybody down there for an evaluation, or if it's reasonable and customary treatment. And if so, then we move forward. Otherwise, we ask questions and put it off to the professionals, and they let us know whether it's reasonable and customary. And you never know. Sometimes somebody might be treating for a left knee injury, and they're getting prescribed something for a right wrist. You don't know. So you've got to really look at this.
Except for workers' compensation or all health records?
It's public safety, injury in the line of duty, not their personal health records, just injured in the line of duty, which technically can be considered, to a certain extent, public record, but it's only the injury itself that's public, none of the records, none of the personal records that, you know, that are hip or certified for that.
Thank you. Bob?
And Judy has asked for a year or so whether this is a good idea for an HR person to be doing, and it doesn't really sound like it at first. It's kind of historic, and a lot of towns do it this way, but as part of the budget process this winter, I am looking at proposals to outsource this part. Judy's very good at it and has a lot of experience at it, but it seems like perhaps a medical professional could get involved right away instead of when she needs them, and she could be more neutral in the process. So just to finish that off.
That is different.
It is. It can be difficult because there's things in there that I don't want to know, and I don't like being the bad guy when it comes to having to say, well, I found out that this really isn't work-related, it doesn't have a causal relation to the work that you do, and I'm usually the one that has to deliver that message. I'm not the one that's making that decision. I'm taking the advice of the professionals, the doctors and case managers, but usually, it's me that has to deliver that message. It doesn't go over well, so I prefer not to be in that spot.
Couple of questions.
Sure.
Thanks. I love that there's a lot of customer service training that goes on. I'm wondering, how do we do benchmarking toward that? In other words, how we're doing? And then, separate but very related, is do we do regular anonymous surveys, asking people to talk to us about how we're doing? I know that we do, I'll call it named surveys, where after a service is completed, there's a form that says, how did we do? I'm wondering if we do anonymous ones as well?
And I want to tack on to that, 360 reviews as well for employees.
Okay.
And management.
Okay, sure. I have not done any benchmarking. I really started this past year focusing on making sure that everybody got that customer service training. I knew it was a goal of the board to make sure that everybody had that delivered to them, so this past year, we've really focused on finding the right type of training. The Kennedy micro trainings are great because you can go in, you can do a five-minute training, and then the next day, you can do the next five-minute training, and they come in those different little modules. So you could get a plethora of training within, you know, a matter of, say, five or six weeks that really covers everything from phone skills to reception and what have you. With regard to the benchmarking, I really don't have that. Down path is unless somebody would have told me that there was something wrong or that someone wasn't performing right, or if it came through as a bad performance review, because there were a lot of complaints. Certainly, if people are complaining, they're complaining to the town manager's office. A lot of times, I don't hear that, but occasionally, I do, and, you know, we'll have a discussion. But there's been really nothing that has made it to my desk as far as, you know, bad customer service here at Town Hall, I'll be honest with you.
I'm wondering if there are... There certainly are benchmarks available in the non-governmental side of things.
Right.
But I would imagine there are in governmental also. I just wonder what's there.
Probably are, with bigger staffs, I would imagine. I mean, there's...
I think all sizes is my guess.
There's one and a half of me.
Yeah. No, I'm wondering if MMA might be a resource here.
I could certainly field the question, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can, we'll reach out to some folks we know. And then the other one's on anonymous surveys. Is that something that's being contemplated or could be contemplated?
I haven't done any surveys. I'm assuming if I get up to full staffing, that's a possibility that at some point, we could get that done, but that's something that would be done in partnership with the town manager's office.
Is that also true for... Is that also true for the 360 reviews and peer reviews? It's, in my experience, it's pretty standard that you both evaluate your manager and your peers evaluating you.
We haven't done that here in the past. From other communities that I've worked in or worked with, I don't know of anybody that does that except the top management.
And just so you're aware, the review process is integrated into collective bargaining. So the unions need to approve any changes. We all use the same evaluation form, except me now. You've seen what the form is because we used it on me once or twice. So all but one of the unions uses that form and one union doesn't get evaluated. But it is a collective bargaining process that we'd have to go through to make changes. Not that I'm opposed to them, just so you know.
And we are in the process of building the HR module within Munis. And we've had to be very careful to stay very specific to that performance review form because of the collective bargaining. I mean, there's nothing on there that isn't on the actual form itself because we just have to be very careful.
One quick question. Did you say that all the work you do is for town schools and RMLD?
Yes. As far as benefits go.
Oh, benefits.
Benefits, yes.
Benefits, okay.
We handle benefits for town, the school, RMLD, and all of our retirees, and that includes retired teachers.
Thank you.
And that therefore overlaps into the whole payroll function, if you will, of the finance department. Benefits are a portion of the payroll, which is done for all of those employees.
Thank you.
I know that you mentioned that there's been training for all staff on issues related to harassment, and you've done training through the Mass Commission against discrimination. And I was wondering, and I think this would be a very challenging undertaking, but if you have taken or if there are steps that can be taken to kind of encourage a culture where people feel safe coming forward to HR if they are having an issue, so that they, you know, so that they feel like, I can do this without fear of retaliation. I mean, I think training and letting people know what their rights are certainly is one of those things. But is there, is there anything that you've seen in the course of your work that can help encourage people to feel like this is an avenue that they can feel comfortable taking?
Sure, thank you. We've actually had a few people that have come forward for different reasons. And it was not long after the training. We did an across-the-town training, so everybody got the sexual harassment training. And it wasn't just about sexual harassment. It was about workplace bullying and other things that tend to really kind of, you know, drive the culture, so to speak. So we've really worked on changing the attitudes of people and the culture. And, you know, what used to be okay is not okay any longer. And, you know, it's really kind of worked its way out where a lot of those folks that were more of the issue have now moved on. They've either retired or they've gone to other communities because they're no longer comfortable here because eyes are watching them. And they know that they're going to come to me. And, you know, I've sat down and done 32-page investigatory reports on, you know, bad behavior. You know, once you start peeling that onion, you know, you keep getting into things more and more. And I'm of the mindset that I like to get to the rub. And I'm usually not satisfied until I get there. And then I turn everything over to the town manager. We have a nice long discussion and he gets to decide what he wants to do.
So two questions. Are the customer service and other trainings required? Is there any number that employees are required to do annually?
Yes. Well, not necessarily annually, it depends. Sexual harassment training, everybody is required to do that. With regards to customer service, everybody, as they come on, they get that customer service training. Then periodically, I'll send them assignments because I have the, on my dashboard, I can send them assignments. So if their manager were to call me and say, so-and-so is having difficulty with, you know, X, Y, Z, I'll look for the training and I will send it either through local gov, you, or Kennedy directly to that individual's desktop. And I can get a report back to see that they have completed that training.
So it's on an as-needed basis?
In some circumstances, yes. But, I mean, we do do periodic trainings requiring everyone to participate.
The standard compliance, yes.
And as you can imagine, you think the widespread diversity of the tasks the organization does, that decision is really up to the department head. But even within departments, there's several, you know, groups that are very different from each other. I could step in unilaterally and do things, but that tends not to work in such a diverse organization, if you will. If there were themes of problems or issues, then that would be appropriate, certainly. And maybe more feedback in some way might help uncover some of that if it's out there.
And we have had training specifically for a focused group. Things such as drug and alcohol awareness. One thing that had not been done previously was the DOT training so that everyone, not just the managers, but the peers within the DBW that all have CDL licenses, they need to have that training. So if they see something wrong, they're going to be able to legally report it and we'll be able to get past all of that minutia.
I just realized some of the board members may not have seen this. There used to be green cards and it used to be available through the website. Feedback, exactly as you're imagining. We did that for several years. There were five ratings, one, two, three, four, five, five being the best, one being the worst. After several years of getting 96% at four and five, we stopped. Because we're thinking, okay, you know, there's a few issues every year that come up. We address them, but this isn't really capturing any problems. We need to rethink this or come up with a different way. So that effort has happened in the past extensively, but not for a few years now.
Has there been additional discussions to further that feedback concept to identify either areas of improvement or problem areas?
We've done it more targeted. So for instance, certain conservation was one area that was done a few years ago where there was a target. Jean and I discussed another area of her department, I think we discussed it last spring and never proceeded, in terms of targeting people who pulled certain permits and then asking for their feedback. Again, you know, what's the objective, I guess, is always the first question. What are we looking to find? And if, for instance, we pulled building permits and asked people to return a survey, do you want it anonymity or not is one question. I don't know the answer. In a regulatory role, are we getting honesty from people who need to come back and see the town again and again? That's another important thing for us to think about. You know, if there's a problem, is this a way to uncover it? So those are the kinds of things we've discussed.
Thank you for the presentation. This was on employee retraction and retention. And I think you covered the attraction pretty well in both the videos and in this page, 61 of our packet, where you've done, you say you've done 135 new hires promotions and reactivations. There were 63 job postings and you've had over 1,000 applicants for those 63. So it seems like the attracting part is going well. What I've asked for in the past and in looking for is data on the retention part. Because we hear anecdotes, people leave after 30 days or whatever. We've heard that in this room. But it's really hard to get a grip on if that's a problem or not without seeing some numbers about retention going back a couple of years.
Well, I can tell you, in the five and a half years that I've been here, I do not believe we have had a problem with retention. We've had probably one person that I can recall that came here for three months and decided that they liked what they were doing previously and went back to their previous job. We have had folks that have left here and asked if they could take a leave of absence in case they don't like their other job, they want to come back. We've had folks that have actually gone, thought they were going to be done, and then have come back. You know, we've gladly taken them back because we've got that institutional knowledge that you're gaining back when you bring them back. The only thing that I would say with regards to retention goes that could be a problem for us is, number one, we're looking at a 3.6% unemployment rate, and there's a lot of competition out there. People who have that drive within them to do public service, they're here to stay for the most part. People who are looking for growth and opportunities, and that typically is, you know, younger folks, they stay for three to five years and they move on. And there's not much you can do to combat that because we're not offering the pay and benefits that the private sector is. And a lot of times, we're losing people to that. I would say that out of all of my exit interviews that I've done, if they weren't retiring to go on to, you know, a more calmer life, they were moving on because of growth opportunities that just are not here for them. And that's the nature of public service.
That said, would the board be able to see actual data on retention over the past couple of years? I've asked this before. Just to put numbers on it.
When you say retention, what do you mean?
Well...
Want to know how many people left and why they left?
No, no. How many, maybe just how many people left and how long they had been in service. That would, you know, give us a rough handle on...
You probably have on that data.
Yeah, I could pull a report together through Munis of the folks who have terminated for one reason or another. Unfortunately, I'll have to scrub out a lot of the data because we've got folks that are, you know...
Seasonal employees.
Exactly, seasonal employees, and they're not going to...
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah. And election workers and things of that nature. But I could manage to scrub something together for you if you don't mind waiting until next week.
Yeah, I'm just looking for, you know, people who were let go or who left and, you know, how long they had been there, you know?
I can tell you...
Because obviously, if they've left after 60 years, well...
It's a handful. It's not many. It's a handful, seriously.
I mean, I think I'd also be interested in any, what we have as far as vacancies and if we have any roles that have a high turnover rate. If there are any, right? Like, do we have specific roles that, well, it's hard to keep people?
Those are the seasonal jobs. Seasonal laborers are tough to get in here. And, you know, they tend to be a little bit more difficult. You know, you want to really be able to identify those good employees and then hopefully move them into a more permanent position. But those are the tougher positions. Honestly, it's the seasonal positions that are tough to fill because people are looking for permanent employment.
I think seasonal is probably not what we're most interested in. I don't want to speak for others, but because by the very nature of it, seasonal, you're going to have more turnover on those particular roles. Because you're right, people want full-time jobs.
Right.
So I think I'd be more interested in full or part-time roles that are permanent as opposed to the seasonal.
I think that actually, the reason why they leave is an important part of it also. So it's not just kind of, here's what happened, here was the tenure.
Right.
But what was the reason at the end? Just to see what's happening. It may all be clear.
I do have exit interviews that I've done. I started doing that a couple of years ago. Not everybody wants to do an exit interview. You know, we've had a couple of people that, you know, just were not a good fit, either for their own purpose or the purpose of the organization. Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not so good. And sometimes it's better to part your ways, you know? And, you know, getting to the point where you understand that is the best thing. We've certainly had to do some separation agreements with folks, you know, that it wasn't a healthy relationship and, you know, we'd need to move on. And then there's been some people that, you know, haven't been happy here for one reason or another, and there's not much we can do about that. If you don't get along with people that you work with, if you don't have respect for the organization, those things usually bubble to the top and they're going to be noticed and they're going to be brought to my attention. And, you know, we're going to wind up having those conversations. And I have a lot of conversations with department heads when those things happen. And I usually, I try to be the voice of reason. Anybody back there that's a department head, try to speak up for me. They say, well, wait a minute. If you're having a problem with somebody, you need to document it. You need to go through the process. You can't just say, okay, I've had it, I'm throwing my hands up in the air, this is the end of this. I'll say, well, wait a minute, I'm going to pull out the employee, you know, file and say, there's nothing in here that says they're anything other than a stellar employee. You've got to go through the process. If there's a problem, then let's talk about a performance improvement plan. Let's talk about progressive discipline. Let's talk about taking the right road. Because we live in a very employee-friendly state and we do not want to wind up down at the MCAD.
Can I just go with that?
No.
No? Do we have other questions from the board? Thank you very much, Judy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the book.
Thank you.
Thanks, Judy.
Thank you.
All right. So Bob, you had asked us to move some things around so that facilities could wait. I see them outside the door, but I don't know if they're quite ready.
Let me go out.
I think so.
Can we take a quick break?
And why don't we take a five-minute break?
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we're back in session. And next up, we'll have Joe Huggins telling us about past and future energy improvements.
Thanks. I want to start by giving a little bit of an overview, and I'll turn it over to Joe. Joe was hired by former school superintendent Pat Scatini a month before I began working for Town in 2005. So it's only through anecdotal stories I heard how he began to change a previous long-term approach and culture to facilities that was best described as one of total disarray. One of Carol Roberts, the former HR administrator's hobbies was to count how many facilities directors there had been, and it was an average of about one a year for many, many years before Joe got here. Parents were especially furious about the lack of maintenance and the condition, especially of schools. Within two years, Joe assembled a team of Town and School staff to approach the issue of energy usage in a long-term and comprehensive way. We met for over 18 months to carefully design an RFQ for Energy Management Services, which is legally defined under Mass. General Law Chapter 25A and especially under Section 11L. And it does not require that the town select the lowest bidder. And let me repeat that. It does not require the town select the lowest bidder, which is rare and really, really helpful. We then received seven very detailed responses to the RFQ. I think they're above that thing, it was a box. We met with them, interviewed the applicants over a period of a few months, and used the rigorous evaluation matrix, which was in that RFQ, and ended up selecting Naresco in 2008. My recollection is they were one of the middle-priced vendors, somewhere in the middle of the seven. We then met with Naresco over a period of a couple of months to discuss exactly what energy improvements we should make. And after several of these meetings, we agreed to a set of about $5 million in changes with a break even of about 20 years. And by that, I mean that energy savings annually would be paid to the vendor in the form of a lease payment requiring only school committee approval. After some internal staff discussion financially, we instead decided to take a different approach and approached Town Meeting to receive authorization to borrow the $5 million at a rate that was much cheaper than the lease payment terms. We ended up doing the exact same $5 million improvements and had debt service for 15 years instead of lease payments for 20 years. So that was an excellent result. This has now become a much more popular approach in the industry for communities that are willing to be that transparent. Many of them still are not willing to go to Town Meeting and be transparent and things like that. Since then, Joe will discuss what other energy improvements were made by his department with additional annual funds, and he'll show you measured energy savings over that period of time. Debt service for this first phase of energy improvements will end in FY '25. So this summer, we met to start discussing planning for Performance Contracting Phase Two. Energy technology has changed significantly in some areas such as LEDs, so items previously not cost-effective in 2008 are much more attractive now. There's also staff and community interest in alternative energy products that may not be the cheapest solution, quote-unquote, if measured only by short-term metrics. Since then, we have met with Naresco as we are still working under that first performance contracting relationship. Let me outline briefly a comprehensive five-step process that Naresco or someone else would go through. Number one is an investment-grade audit, and Joe will get into that in some more detail. Number two would be design engineering. Number three is construction. Number four is commissioning, and number five is ongoing measurement and services. So for our purposes and for the short run, only number one is important because the others are way down the road. Specifically, we envision working with interested community partners with a timeline that's now probably advanced from what we thought of last summer. And these are some of the milestones that we can imagine hitting. In March to develop, March 2020, develop a preliminary project scope. April, develop an energy savings plan. May, to use some technology called IntellaChoice. It's technically spec the programs. And then if we're prepared after May, in June, we could develop final scope and pricing, and July, develop a final investment-grade audit report, i.e., what are we measuring? So it's important to note that up until that point, even if we do all that, no decisions have been made on what to do, just what are we measuring? In August, if Naresco completes the IGA, the investment-grade audit, this would complete the fact-finding, quote-unquote. And again, no decisions really have been made up till that point. Then the calendar becomes a little unclear. We'd have to have Town, School, Community discussions on, quote, "what to do," as well as, quote, "how to pay for." The soonest I could imagine those discussions being wrapped up, and if we proceed to Town Meeting, as I would expect, to request that authorization would be a year from this April, April 2021. I don't know if that's realistic, but I know that it can't really happen any faster. So I just wanted to give you some background before Joe then does his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we just put together a question and outlined what we're going to be talking about tonight. Well, I'll give you the background. We're going to talk a little bit about the Phase One, which was the ECM, the Energy Conservation Measures, and then we installed them in the project from 2009. We'll talk about what those entail. I'll also show you a slide on the verified savings after year eight for the performance contract period. The way performance contracting works is that there's a guaranteed savings associated with the project, and they do, we're in a 15-year agreement for measurement verification where they come out, make sure we've been doing our equipment, that everything's running as should. We download them a bunch of our utility reports on consumption, and if we don't meet the mark as far as the guaranteed savings, and it's not anything that we're doing, Naresco would write a check, and that's how performance contracting works. I'll show you how it has been working. We'll talk about Energy Management Services as a whole. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about some ECMs that we've done since Phase One, post-Phase One in the school and town buildings, just to kind of keep the ball rolling with things we've learned. And then we'll close it up with the supposed Phase Two project. So a big part of the project with performance contracting, a lot of what carries a performance contracting initiative is lighting. Lighting has the fastest payback. And we, at the time, replaced a lot of the older fluorescent light fixtures with high-efficiency T8s and T5 systems throughout all of the buildings that are under the agreement. So that's what carries the project and gives you the most savings over your payback. We also did lighting controls. It's part of the investment-grade audit. Naresco came in and put lighting tractors in all areas to see what the usage was during the day and at night so we knew where we could get the best savings. So there's motion sensors in a lot of the buildings that turn the lights off, occupancy sensors throughout all the facilities. We also did some domestic water conservation measures, waterless urinals, some low-flow toilets, aerators on a lot of, there's a lot of sinks in a lot of the buildings, as you can imagine. So we did that, and that's one of the ECMs. This was a big one for us to have. We had the energy management systems. We sort of had a little bit of everything in the buildings because what we were given during different school projects was not on the same platform. Through the Naresco project, we were able to narrow it down to two systems that run the energy management, which is the controls for heating, ventilation, occupancy, scheduling and things of that nature. We also did weatherization and attic insulation in a number of the buildings, Town Hall being one of them, fire stations, and just around, generally around all the buildings, replacing weather stripping on doors. This is low-hanging fruit, but you do lose a lot of energy in those areas. We also did another ECM, number six, was energy-efficient LED traffic signals for all the town-owned traffic signals in town, which at the time was, I forget what the number was that we did, but we did quite a few of them in Redding. So we did do some solar. We did solar domestic hot water at the two fire stations and the police station as a We also did a solar preheat rooftop system, which is at the performing art center of the Redding Memorial High School, which is basically a giant duck bank that warms air up. And when the sun is on this duck bank, it pulls air and it's warmed up by the sun so that when the units that heat the library come on, and they're not heating air that's coming in at 20 degrees, it's heating in, it's like around 70 or 80 degrees. So that saves energy there. ECM number nine was replacing unit ventilators at Andy England Woods at the Killen Elementary School, which were antiquated. The boilers were newer, but we took all that old equipment out that was giving us problems and it got all taken care of over at that location. That was a big one. So we also did steam-to-hot water conversion at the Birch Metal Elementary School. We put natural gas fire condensing boilers in and replaced all the H&amp;Bs and the unit ventilators in that building. That was a, that was a big project that got done as part of the performance contracting. We also did heating system upgrades. At the Town Hall, we did new condensing boilers at this location. We did a new steam boiler at the Westside Fire Station, new burners at the Joshua Eden, and we did new burners at Coolidge Middle School. Also out back here at the Town Hall, we replaced an 80-ton air cool chiller with a much smaller, I think it's around 55 tons of cooling we do this whole building with now, which is more efficient. It was way oversized for what we needed here. So this is what we were talking about. This is what kind of tells the story. This is the verified savings for year eight, was $408,921, which exceedingly now the guaranteed savings of $380,000. And that just shows you the different energy conservation measures and how it all stacked up in dollars. This slide just kind of shows you how they kind of calculate the savings. You've got your baseline utility costs in the first column there. Then during the EMS contract, there's the payment, which by doing the measures, the payment, the savings pays for the lease payment if you go that way, and then any additional savings on top, and then after the contract, over to your right. Any questions so far?
Joe, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
With the, like, for example, that $28,000 savings, how does that get shared? Or do we, is that all us?
That's actually $400,000 of savings, which is 28 more than what was guaranteed.
Sorry, it's the above, the amount above the guarantee?
The way we did it, since we didn't do the lease payment, was in the early years, it sounded a little down.
Bill left the room.
We just spent 5% of the capital and added more so that we could pay the debt service for this with savings. Over time, and as times got tougher, before the override passed, we just narrowed that down so that there wasn't really money being earmarked for this. So the, since energy is an accommodated cost, it just flowed right through to the operating budgets for both the Town and the schools. But at first, it was really dedicated to debt service, then it narrowed down.
Yeah, so at this point...
So it's been about $400,000 a year.
Got it.
Less.
And so the way it works is if it was below the 380 guarantee, they'd make good?
They'd write a check.
Correct. Okay. And when it's above, we're, we're, we get it?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks.
So we're going to talk a little bit, these are some of the measures we did since the performance contracting initiative. We installed new domestic hot water tanks over the D.P. Barrows Elementary School that are insulated that weren't before. We did an LED lighting project at the Birch Metal Elementary School in the hallways and some classrooms. We also did high-efficiency condensing boilers, and we did LED lighting in the hallways at the Eaton. At Coolidge, we did LED lighting in the gymnasium and high-efficiency condensing hot water boilers for domestic. We also did a return air fan installation at the Woodend School, and we installed high-performance skylights over there. At the high school, we did high-efficiency condensing boilers, which is, which just finished, we just finished that project. And we did LED lighting in the fieldhouse auditorium and assorted hi-hat LEDs on the hallways in Main Street. Town Hall, this room is sitting in, we also did LED lighting in a lot of the common areas and conference rooms at the Town Hall. The DPW, which is, uses a lot of energy down there because of the nature of the work they do. We did LED lighting at the high-bake garage, the mechanic's base in the cold storage building, and we installed a high-efficiency heat pump system in the dispatch area. Same thing at the police station, LED lighting in the common areas. We did new high-efficiency condensing boilers at Main Street Fire. We put a new roof on the Westside Fire Station, insulated over there. Cemetery Garage, new LED lighting in there, the shop areas and offices. And we also finished a job that we partnered up with DPW on retrofitting 98-ton home streetlights to LED. We just finished that this year. So this is what Naresco's proposing, and none of these are actually stone, but these are some of their potential projects that could be. And it's important to remember that the only thing we can do, we can't do anything that wasn't on the first, in the first contract. It has to be clearly spelled out, the buildings that were part of Phase One. If we couldn't do another building unless it was on this list. So LED lightings, LED lighting improvements, renewable energy, solar PV, geothermal, we're going to look at energy management system upgrades from what we have, high-efficiency condensing hot water boilers, there's more to be done that we'd like to do. Rooftop units, some that are aging that we could look at, energy-efficient transformers, power factor correction, building weatherization, some pipe and fitting insulation, plug-load controls, computer power management, walking cooler controls, and high-efficiency motors. So all those things will be looked at when they do what's called the investment-grade audit. This is some of the work that Naresco recently did at the Bringsbury Public School. They just threw a slide in there to show you some of the projects they did. And then some solar PVs, projects they did, and some geothermal that Virginia's...
The savings continues. We're still going to work with them. Is that, any questions?
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And thank you for sending in admits.
Yes, thank you very much for sending in admits.
So I may have missed it in the very beginning, but did you mention how long our contract with Naresco lasts?
The M&amp;V is 15.
Yeah, so it's 2025.
Right.
2025. And at that point, will, either, will we pursue another performance contract with them or something?
You know, the decisions are ours, but they're obviously well aware of what's going on in our town and our buildings and our systems. So we can legally proceed with them now under the old contract. So that's the easiest option, if you will. We don't have to go through any other procurement process that way. And where again it wasn't low bid, that's much more reasonable than if you were trying to extend something that was low bid.
Other questions?
Go ahead. How much, two questions related. How much do we work with RMLD on some of these activities? How much could we work with RMLD on some of these activities?
I remember we invited RMLD into the first discussion, and they just had a low amount of interest. And honestly, that's not as common on their ability, so much as grants were available that didn't include municipal-owned light plants. So finances just didn't consider them as a party. I don't know if that's changed. That's something we need to learn as to how, how and whether they participate more.
So when...
It did end up keeping a small amount of money.
Yeah, for the, for the LEDs.
Yeah.
The thing is with ESCOs, our energy service contractors, is that they have the bandwidth to be able to pull off a project of this size because they work with vendors. They have a small group of vendors that they work, that do their HVAC, that they do their plumbing, their electrical, and they're able to get in and how they have a formula that works. And when I say that, I mean, we were able to get boilers at the schools especially to get that work done over one summer was a huge undertaking. You need a company that has like the manpower and the management to back that up, if you will, that can do that. And an ESCO, you know, the ESCOs have the ability to do that, so...
I'm actually thinking a different way. So one of the, I was at the RMLD meeting last night. One of their big pushes is electrification as a way to kind of rebuild some of their lost things. their lost things. And the world has changed enough at this point that we can save energy and shift to electric in some cases. And that's what they're banking on. That, I think, may be how their, their load either stays consistent or can go up in the future. So I would imagine that they might have interest not in doing the contracts, not getting in the way of that, but in seeing them happen, participating in a different way because it meets their needs really well going into the future. Whereas in the past, maybe it didn't because it was loss for them. Now it actually may be changing into gain. And I, I think it's worth talking to them about how to do that and just see what their interest is.
If that gets wrapped into the development?
Maybe it does.
Yeah, we asked them last time, and obviously I always have to ask them.
Yeah.
There's no what's up.
It was a big discussion last night.
Other questions?
Yeah, sure. Couple more baseline questions, Joe. So as, as Bob said, and I totally agree, the best use, the best bet is to use less energy and that'll reduce our costs. So have we, has NESCO done, or have we done, do we know the R value level of insulation in different buildings and, and what the cost benefit would be of upping the R value, that is the insulation value? So for example, we're putting in a system at Coolidge this summer. If, if we know the R value rating and if it could be increased, then we might not need such a large system to, to go in. So does NESCO have that information?
You need to cover for the, who needs the whole bill.
Means...
So I can tell you that when we design new, when we do new roof systems, if you want to talk about insulation, that's like where you have a huge heat losses going right off of the roof.
Right.
So a lot of the new roofing systems per code have to have a certain thickness of the tapered insulation for the roof system.
Yeah.
So that is always looked at.
But an overall R value for the building NESCO doesn't do?
I'm confused what you mean by an overall R value for the building.
This was, I, I, so I had the same question. So the R value of the actual insulation, can we be using insulation with a higher R value to improve the insulation overall? Not, not of the whole building, obviously, but of the actual installation that's being, or the actual insulation that's being used.
So many of the buildings that have attics in them have been insulated as part of the first phase of the project, I will tell you that. And I don't know the number, but I can find out, I can answer the board back on that question. But like I said, when there's a new construction project going on, like at the Redding Public Library, or we're doing a new roof system, that's always looked at so that we, you know, get a better energy savings.
From the perspective I was looking at is, you know, to your point about Coolidge, putting in this new heating system, if we have better quality insulation, do we need as big a heating system because there's less loss? So is that something that's taking...
To be quite frank with you, we're actually downsizing the size of the boilers at the, at the Coolidge Middle School. So what we're doing over there, just, I think there's been some confusion maybe about what exactly is we're doing. That building is a steam heat building. It was built in 1957 or 58?
No, it was built in 61.
61, there you go, see?
John was there.
Yeah, John was there.
So old as me.
So when that building was originally built, it was all steam heat. And they renovated it in 1997, 98. And, yep, and then they added about 30,000 square feet onto the building. And we have a steam hot water converter that provides hot water heat to the back of the building. It's very inefficient because you have to, obviously if you're making steam heat, you have to build a lot of energy to do that. What we're doing is putting a condensing boiler in, we're going to take the heat exchanger out, and we're going to put a, three condensing boilers that are small, they're like the size of three large refrigerators, and they're going to heat that rear section of the building, which means we don't have to run those two giant boilers that are in the, in the boiler room to heat the rear section. And a condensing boiler, the way it runs, is much more efficient than a normal hydraulic boiler. So that's what we're doing there. So we're going to be, believe it or not, downsizing. And another example of that is at the high school, we took one of the large Cleaver Brooks boilers offline and put three condensing, four condensing boilers in their place. And we can run the whole high school off of two of those, just to give you an idea. So insulation is important, but it's also sizing the equipment correctly. And that's what they'll do when they come in and look at the, when they do the investment grade audit, to make sure.
Great, thank you.
And I know that RMLD has rebates on heat pumps and you've experimented with, you've already installed some geothermal heat pumps?
No geothermal.
No, no geothermal?
No.
Okay.
No.
What were they, the heat pumps?
These are small split systems that you'd see like in classrooms or in office areas. And we put heat pumps in like at the DPW that has the dispatch area down there. So there was an older style heat pump system in there. We put a newer style in there that provides heating and air conditioning in there. But that's on a small scale for that.
Yeah.
The heat pumps, to the best of my knowledge, and we are going to look into it to see, is that they don't, they don't heat as well down below 30 degrees like a boiler would. And they don't offer the same output as a boiler would. Like it's, in a household application, it's good, but you're only talking, you're talking about a large commercial building. So if the technology exists that we can use heat pump technology, we'll do it, but... I remember as part of the first phase, we looked at taking up the front of town hall, for instance, in the code geothermal. I haven't remembered the exact number, but the payback is on the order of 80 plus heaters. New England is not the best location 10 years ago for this technology. Obviously, we'll look and see what's changed. Again, that's to my earlier comments, maybe we don't need to look at everything on the payback, pure financial issue, but we'll come to that discussion soon.
Just to follow on that for a sec. So I think you've heard from this board, I think some other boards as well, that there's interest in, in looking at what the opportunities are in other forms of energy. So solar, photovoltaic, as well as geothermal. To understand what is the, the state of the technology, and as we talked about, maybe there are other parties that might have interest in, in supporting it. And just to kind of keep that in, in view. And I think, and one of the things that came up at town meeting was kind of, and you described nicely what, kind of what's going on and why, is a notion that we want to be thinking forward a little bit. And so now is a great time to be doing that, just to make sure that it's part of the discussion. And if there are areas where it works, that's great. And if there are areas where it doesn't, so be it.
I think, Bill, on that, the concept of electric vehicles, not just RMLD, but other organizations are looking to use electric vehicles more. It's a unique situation with the town because you put a lot of miles on these vehicles. So are there vehicles within our fleet that can be upgraded? And what does that mean from a broader perspective as far as maintenance? And is it practical? Is it beyond just the cost effectiveness of it?
I think Eric's gone, Eric is somewhere. DPW visited FinCon, I don't know if they have to go and discuss that. Just, the quick summary was, two or three years from now, that might be possible. Technology's not there today.
Well, and if that's the case, then, and it is the direction we plan on pursuing down the line, are there efforts that we can make now to start thinking about the installation of the infrastructure needed as far as charging stations? And is that incorporated into the plan so that once we're, once the technology is ready or prepared for it from an infrastructure perspective?
If I could tack on to that, just to interrupt for one second. I mean, the technology's already here for many people in town who have electric EV vehicles. And I think one of the things that came out of town meeting and instructional motions was to invest in these sorts of technologies. And is it possible to install some EV charging, charging stations in a couple of places around town so that we encourage, number one, this type of technology, make it friendlier to the residents who have EV?
Electric vehicles.
Electric vehicles, thank you. I was going to have to say EV vehicles, but that doesn't work. And no, and then to maybe also make the downtown in Redding more of an attraction to people who have EV vehicles and, yeah.
That discussion has been added to the downtown phase two project. Just to retap downtown improvements, search water, sewer, stormwater and above ground.
Yeah.
The first three are first, obviously. The apart ground is probably a year and a half away, but that's part of that discussion for sure.
I would also suggest, you know, at our last meeting, we had the great presentation from Julie about the parking and how the goal there is to completely revamp our parking downtown. So as part of that, it would be nice, we could identify areas that while we may not be able to install the charging stations within the next six months, or six to nine months, which is what we're shooting for, for that overhaul, to at least incorporate the potential for that down the line. So that when we want to, we already know where the spaces will be. Moving away from electric vehicles, but still on energy, what efforts does the town make? You know, RMLD sends out the heat report peak alerts. For those of you watching at home, you can sign up for them on the RMLD website, rmld.com. They'll send you an email to let you know when you need to decrease energy use, especially in the summer months. What is the town doing to support that effort?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Is this a facilities related issue or a broad...
So the idea when, when RMLD sends out those, sure, the peak alerts, it's when there's an anticipation, again, especially in the summer with air conditioner use particularly high, to do things like not run your dishwasher, don't run your pool filters, don't plug in your electric vehicles, wait until after peak hours, just in 8, summer 8 p.m. Does the town have something similar to try and decrease our energy usage during those peak times?
I guess it circles back to a few years back when they were going to offer two rates, one for people who would use more energy on peak. The town didn't qualify, the schools are closed during the summer. So they just kind of took us off that discussion because that's our biggest energy use and it doesn't, we don't have air conditioning in the schools generally, and it doesn't run in the summer. So that's the biggest savings that would happen. I'm not sure if there's too much more that would go on in the summer in the remaining buildings that are open that would matter, we don't have dishwashers and so forth. You have, you have master controls to take care of all the energy efficiency. In turn, in a lot of, in the, there are certain programs that are run during the summer months that would be very difficult, whether our air conditioning spaces, the deprived, the people that are in the programs without PC, the children that are in the program. So it's kind of difficult to do that in a school, or a library building.
Good point.
You know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right. But is there anyone in the audience that, like, yes, Karen?
Sure, Karen, her finance committee. I was just trying to clarify, I've been hearing that the town was about to renegotiate the Neresco contract, but it sounds more like just determine what the decision is going to consist of? Is that what, is more accurate?
The timeline I laid out was those five steps. The first step might be completed by August, September, and really no decisions are made at that point. The decisions are after that. And that's under the existing Neresco contract.
So phase two, those were all like what ifs? Those are like, here's a list of things that could happen in phase two of our contract?
So theoretically, again, if we move on that schedule sometime next fall, then the community can have a discussion whether a school could be selected or anyone else as to, you know, here are some of the options for the event. So that's when that will come in.
And the, the portables, which are now heat pump driven, is that correct? Portable classrooms? We're getting a few more. Are they all air source heat pumps?
Yes.
Is Neresco going to help you manage those as well? Because they should have attached those schools or are those excluded?
No, those would not be under the performance contracting because it's not, they're not listed on the list, so to speak. You know what I mean? Yeah. But those are really small. Those are only, what, how many tons of cooling under each one of those? Kevin? Five or six?
Four or five.
Four or five tons of cooling? Those are small.
Each one?
Yeah, each classroom.
I mean, we're starting to build some momentum in town. I hear those are where the DPW heat pumps. So now we've got like a number of portables more coming.
Right.
And the DPW, so there's heat pump technology going, which is great. One of the things I was wondering, as Bob has offered to get the climate activity committee involved in this process, so that we can have better communication about what kind of renewables that the board and residents are looking for can come out of this process. How do you see that coming?
That's the community discussion I just mentioned, starting sometime, like next summer, early next fall.
It would make, it would make sense to have someone involved while they're doing the energy audit?
I don't think so because no decisions are made or options are even examined until that time. We're just figuring out what is it that we want to measure? You know, to do the energy audit, what are we looking to measure again? And then this discussion about, okay, what do we think about these results? Where can we make changes? What would the changes be? That seems to be the sensible time for them now that we're still participating.
Okay, so just, just the green communities option, the application is mid-October, and then audit is the first step, one of the first steps of the application. There's a lot of synergies to it, so.
And just to be clear about the, the audit, the audit is free if we do it through Neresco and continue to work with them. If it weren't, then a grant would certainly be welcome.
Well, it's part of the application process, so you would, you'd have to get one for something else.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the audience?
Vanessa, I had two, two points. Joe, you're, you're right, heat pumps only handle a certain temperature range, and in the coldest days, they can't cut it. But they certainly do reduce the need for, say, a gas fired system. So I was hoping that, that, to see some of that analysis.
So this might answer, answer some of your questions about that. So what, what the investment grade audit is, the IGA, is a information dump that happens between my department and Neresco. We give them, again, we're going to give them all of our utility information, which luckily they already have all of it. We're going to give them an updated asset inventory of all of our, the things that have changed since 2009, what's been replaced, what's on the horizon for replacements, and what our thoughts were to replace things. What they do is they go through and they look, they look at everything that we have and put data loggers on the equipment to see how much energy for a particular piece of equipment is consuming, if you will. And then they go ahead and they give us a, something called an Intellic choice model, or we call it the deal board. And basically, this deal board is, is every energy conservation measure that I showed you folks, but it's by building. And it says, okay, if we do comprehensive LED lighting at all 15 locations or 14 on the, 14 is what's covered, here's how much, here's what it's going to do. And then we're going to add in some solar if we wanted to, as an example, some solar PV, some geothermal possibly. They'll put everything in there, and with the whole idea is to get down to the savings pay for it, so that there's a, it's budget neutral, if you will. And if you put certain things, let's say we wanted to add windows. We put windows in the town hall as part of performance contracting, the payback was 120 years, it killed, it killed the payback. We took it off because we did that under our own capital plan. But the audit spells all that stuff out very clearly and shows you where the savings are being driven from. And it's, it's a balance between, you know, what can work and what can't really work.
Yeah.
But nothing's off the table, it's just that we need to have them do the audit. And it's, it takes them six to eight months to do this particular process.
We are, we are making decisions though, as we...
That's your point of August, September being the decisions. They put everything they can possibly think of on the table.
Right. Yeah.
Including, you know, using a system this way part of the year and that way part of the year.
Right.
That's all on the table.
I guess what I'm saying is we're, we're making decisions, I assume, without them by installing new burners and things like that. For instance, at Coolidge.
Not really, no, because the condensing boilers are what was in the performance contracting initiative. That's following right along with Neresco's whole mantra. That's what we did. LED lighting, boom. I mean, that's the last one on the capital plan pending another round of performance contracting. So there is no work scheduled that would sort of violate whatever we decide in the future. Excuse me? One more thing to keep in mind, they come out once a year and they visit us.
Yeah.
They come into my office and they crawl around our buildings once again. They do. Because they want to make sure that they're, they're protecting their investment.
Yeah.
That we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Yeah.
That we're maintaining our equipment. So why would you spend, it, it seems crazy, but why would you spend $5 million and not maintain the equipment?
Yeah.
Just a question from the audience.
I, I get it, thanks, Joe.
If you will.
Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you, just one more comment. I'm not sure everyone here knows, the Met at Redding Station...
Just one more comment, I'm not sure everyone here knows, the Met at Reading Station, that's an electrified air-source, I believe it's air-source, air-source heat pump-driven building. They did not pull a gas line. I'm surprised you're still hearing that heat pumps don't work down to zero because that's not a mine-stallers toll booth, and all those people are like, that whole building, that's like a commercial building. So maybe you'll hear something if you're going to get into that.
Okay.
So, that leads to another question, which is that, so they come in and make sure we're maintaining the equipment properly, but the recommendations that they made that resulted from the audit presumably in 2009, does that evolve with time and technology? Or is it, we have the contract with them for, you said, 15 years? And at that point, because technology on the sustainability front is evolving very rapidly, and so the recommendations that were made in 2019, 2009, 2010, some of those may not be the best by what the standards are today. So how does that work?
Let me try, and then you correct. Put yourself in Naresco's shoes, they have to guarantee money to the town if this doesn't work. So they have an extensive model and a baseline measure. When Joe's department makes other improvements because the technology has improved and is there, that doesn't count for energy savings for Naresco's purpose. That's something we've chosen to do above and beyond performance contracting. So they're still measuring what they started out with, but we're still improving the way maybe you suggested. They have to fix it in time themselves for their own purposes, and we don't have to stop.
So it's in their best interest to amend their proposals?
It's in their best interest to come out and inspect every year because their money is on the book if energy savings doesn't happen. So they want to make sure all this stuff that was agreed to at the start is being done properly. To the extent that Joe's done something else that saved $25,000, and the consumption shows that, we don't get credit in terms of the performance contract, because that was not something that they did at the time that we suggested.
I think I understand. So we have the flexibility to go above and beyond, and, okay, we don't get credit, but we get the 25 grand in savings.
Credit in the real world, just...
Yeah, right, right, right. So we do have some flexibility, that's good to hear.
But that puts the onus on us to come up with those incremental changes, right? And so I guess the advantage of doing this audit sooner than later is that we'll get the benefit of them doing it in real time. So sooner is better than later.
Great. Any other questions? All right, Joe, this was great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. So, we're a little ahead of schedule.
Say that again.
I, I, I...
Say it again, please, too.
Wait, let me guess what?
She's with us in spirit. All right, so we actually...
I want to take a few moments just while we're...
We're going to just take a five-minute break. All right, we're back in session. We're a little ahead of schedule, folks, so we have about 10 minutes before we can open the hearing. With that time, why don't we revisit, I don't know, 10 minutes isn't enough to do? Once? Yeah, let's give it a minute. Okay. So, Kaylin, I just had one minor edit, which is that when we reference TIPS training...
Yep.
...should be capitalized because it's an acronym.
Okay.
But that's all I had. So let's have a motion, actually, a microphone.
I can do it.
A microphone.
Move that the select board approve the meeting minutes of November 19th, 2019, as amended.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? Anybody else? Okay. All those in favor? And we still have eight minutes. So, this is a very unusual position for us. Yes, Bob?
If you want to talk about your January retreat opportunity, I don't know if that's a worthwhile eight minutes.
Well, I don't, yes, we will absolutely do that, and I'm also going to suggest that we talk about, in these eight minutes, office hours for January.
Ah, yes.
Which we, to John's point, have been a little negligent on. So, if we want to take a look at the calendar and see when and where we would like to have office hours. I know John has been doing the monthlies at Senior Center.
At 11?
Hmm?
11?
I'm not sure what, I do believe that they're at 11, I don't know what day.
I think it's the seventh Tuesday, it's like, it's about a month.
That sounds right. So I think that's great, and do we want to consider doing one at the library?
Sure.
And maybe, instead of doing them one-off, we make some regularity, it'll make it a little bit more predictable for people, and say, the second Tuesday of every, the first, sorry, the first Saturday, or the second Saturday of every month.
Yeah.
Working around, you know, any holidays that might exist.
I offered to take one of the 11 o'clock Senior Center ones.
I haven't done one of the office hours in a while, so I'd be happy to take the January one.
January 4th is the first Saturday.
I also haven't done one in a while, so if you'd like me to do the, if we're doing the first Saturday of the month, I could take.
I'll do February?
Yep, so that would be February 1st.
Yeah, it'd be February 1st and January 4th. Okay. So, Bob, if you can add those in.
Vanessa on the 4th and Anne on the 1st.
Yeah.
Okay.
And let's say, let's make it...
I'll check with the libraries to make sure.
Yeah, we do have...
So I actually did it in the map room, which was sort of nice and easy.
MAP map or...
MAP map, yes, not MATH.
9:30 or 9:00? How did you do it?
9:30.
9:30.
Okay, great, let's do 9:30 to 10:30. And then, who would like to do March 7th?
I can take March 7th.
Mark, would you like to do that one?
Sure.
And then, we'll revisit for April, following the election.
So 9:30 at the library, March 7th.
Okay. Yeah, we still have six minutes.
I'll circle back to confirm those dates sometime and find it at the library.
The agenda for the retreat?
Yes.
Before we go there, are we, so this is suggesting that we'd have one office hour per month?
It was before.
It was? Okay. Why did I think it was more regular?
It was every other meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so, I don't like the term retreat, I realize this is tricky, but for our January session, what?
Charge. It's not a retreat.
Bad dad, don't mark.
I am what I am.
All right, so, as far as agenda topics, we've talked about numerous items a couple of months ago that we may want to tackle, and a lot of them are the, less about the nitty-gritty of the townwork and more about philosophically where we want to be headed, if there are efficiencies within meetings that we want to handle, you know, even simple things, seemingly smaller things, like, do we vote to approve everything on the warrant, or are there only certain pertinent things that we want to? So, with our four minutes remaining before we can start the hearing, are there things that we would, that you'd want to sort of throw on the table that we could potentially tackle in, within a couple of hours or hours, that are not everyday topics? Things that are...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is this title reasonable, or do you want to suggest another? That's what's been there for a little while.
Let's leave that in there for now.
Select board strategy discussion on objectives, priorities, and timeframe.
Why don't we leave it there, and then once we determine what the agenda is, we can narrow that down.
Okay.
So is that for, like, goal-setting, prior, you know, pri...
It can be goal-setting.
Because we wanted to revisit the goals and maybe reprioritize.
We can add new ones, I mean, you know, Mark's point, you had your statement about things you wanted to discuss.
Yeah.
And I think it's valid, where...
I think it has to start higher level. The mission isn't to walk in and talk about last year's objectives. The mission is to figure out, how do we make the board better focused? What are our priorities? What do we want to get done? And better ways to do it. That's, to me, the number-one objective for this thing.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that dovetails, though, with the goals that we can establish for ourselves, what do we want to accomplish this year? And that will help focus us. But yes...
I'm thinking it's more how we work together, and then what should come from that is what we want to work on. But I think how we work together is the first level, that I think we don't have time during these meetings to talk about.
Mm-hmm.
And just kind of how that goes. And even, I think that the communication that's now happening, happening and not happening, that's the discussion we should have also, not the policy of communication, but what it is that we want to make sure is flowing. So, the last couple of weeks, Bob, this, I think, has been great. I felt like there's a lot more stuff coming. I think that's the kind of stuff that we ought to talk about, is make sure that we're aligned.
I think one of the things that I've experienced this year as chair is that there are the nitty-gritty, we have to do the licenses, we have to appoint people to board, things like that, right? It's the administrative tasks of the board that we are responsible for.
Yeah.
You know, Andy, I think your point about the goals is an important one. I also think there's singular year goals, and then there's long-term goals, right? I think sustainability is one of those. I think the downtown, the South Main Street development area is one of those goals. And those are not things that we're going to have, like the administrative duties that require a one-time 20 minutes on the agenda. We need an hour to have a philosophical conversation about it, and every year, potentially, the board could change. So, there needs to be some kind of structure, understanding, or culture on the board that says, you know, every March, we talk about X, or twice a year. And that needs to be conversations that happen separate from all of our administrative tasks, which means additional meetings, because the agendas get filled up very quickly with what is required of us. And if we want to have those long-term conversations, they need to happen separately. So I'd like to see that formalized, not in policy, but in practice.
I think for the retreat, because we don't have another word for the charge, I would love to have, have kind of a less formal setting. I don't know if we, we talked about maybe not having it televised, but certainly still posted and open to the public, but to allow for a less formal conversation, I thought maybe, maybe we could have dinner together, you know, break bread together, I think that's always a nice way...
You don't want me eating when we're having these discussions, I just...
I think sometimes sharing a meal together can be a nice way of sharing, so. And I don't know, I know...
Has to be in a public building.
Has to be in a public building.
Publicly available space.
A publicly available space, so, but not town, necessarily town-owned?
Doesn't technically have to be town. So, one board did it at Jordan's conference.
Right, I remember you'd mentioned that.
How about a room at a restaurant?
You can do that, but the public has to be welcome.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Let's not pass up Jordans too quickly, they have an ice cream place in there.
Yeah, traffic.
It's a good point.
Well, yeah, no, thank you, but, you know, what brings people together, like ice cream? Just a thought.
It's a good point.
So, one other thought, I remember, I was at Mark Wood River, and he brought this idea, and it was at Wakefield, who'd done this, and they had someone kind of...
Facilitator.
Facilitate, yeah. So, could, could we, should we have a facilitator?
I would very much like that. Because it's definitely hard to participate in a conversation when you're trying to manage it.
Yes, sure.
But January 7th is, or whatever that date is, is sort of around the corner. So, if we're going to, do we, actually, that's a great place to start, do we have anyone that could act as a facilitator?
We have facilitators that are professional in town.
We have a town that's a little bit different, but I don't know if that's appropriate for you.
She may not feel comfortable, I would love to have her, I think she'd be fabulous, but I don't know if she's...
I would have no problem, but she may not feel comfortable, I don't know.
Right, and that would, yeah, that would be fair.
I can hope.
You can ask her, if she's comfortable with it, great, if not, then I...
That sounds great from our, right, looking at around, around the table, that's great from our perspective, if she were comfortable with that.
If she is not... If she is not, do we have a Plan B?
We gently discussed asking Alan Foles as a possibility, too.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
All right.
I haven't spoken with him. Sorry, Alan.
I mean, he's already hired, he's already paid.
Yeah, we could offer him a.
What's to lose?
Doubling if he doesn't.
I'm happy to reach out to Alan if that's, depending on what, yeah?
Why don't you do that anyways, and we'll pull it out.
Yep.
Okay.
A third possibility that I haven't pursued is moderator of a different town.
Do we know, we could sort of reach out to our counterparts and see who has it good?
I do know someone who would be very good.
Which town?
Wakefield.
Okay, I was going to say North Reading used to be the moderator here, so many, many years ago.
Yeah, that's fine, too. I know.
I can answer that.
I know the gentleman in Wakefield.
Okay. So it looks like we have a list of potential facilitators. Three deep seems sufficient. Hopefully, one will be able to come through for us. We would need to provide that person with our agenda fairly soon, so that we could, so that they would know what to prepare. So we are now are able to start the hearing, and we have our staff in the audience, so I don't want to take the hearing long, but we have to. Bob, could I ask you, I know our next three meetings are budget-based. But can we add this to further hash out the agenda sooner rather than later? I don't know what tomorrow's presentation.
When will depend on that liquor question earlier.
So let's, given that that may happen later, perhaps at this time tomorrow. Oh, we can't postpone.
Nope.
The following Tuesday. Okay. Great, so now we have a hearing. You have a motion. Lovely, thank you.
I do. Ready?
Yep.
To the inhabitants of the town of Reading, please take notice that the select board of the town of Reading will hold a series of public hearings on December 3rd, 2019, at 9:30 PM in the select board's meeting room, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts. Two, amend Article 5.2.1, add to the end of Paragraph 4, the Reading residents of housing projects developed under MGL Chapter 40R or 40B do not qualify from the above exemption regarding the employee parking sticker "No Charge Passes." Amend Article 5.2, add to the end of Paragraph 8, the Reading residents of housing projects under MGL Chapter 40R or 40B do not qualify for the above exemption regarding the Reading Community Access sticker "No Charge Passes." A copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the town manager's office, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from 7:30 AM to 5:30 PM, Tuesday from 7:30 AM to 7:00 PM, and will be in the select board packet on the website at www.reddingma.gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing, or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to 4:00 PM on December 3rd, 2019, to townmanager@ci.reddingma.us per order of Robert W. Lashar, Town Manager.
Wonderful. So Bob, we're handing it over to you, or?
I'll give you an overview. We have Officer Scott and Lieutenant Amendola, as questions may arise. Just to take a step back, on January 21st, our objective is to come in and talk to the board as a PTTF. You know, we heard you loud and clear that the downtown parking issue, you'd like to solve it quicker, rather than doing it in March or April. So we're going to come into you on January 21st, if the board is available and willing, to have a significantly long discussion. I'd put an hour and a half on the agenda, we'll see. The reason I bring this up is, what is, tonight is a short-term fix for what a longer-term solution might be, one small part. It's clear to me, as an outsider to a lot of this process, haven't worked with Julie Mercier recently, a lot of the wording needs to be changed, just to be clear. So much like we've done the zoning bylaws, the general bylaws, the charter, and so forth, this document needs work. We didn't want to tackle that tonight, so we just wanted to close what I think are two loopholes. When this, when these exceptions were created and free parking, if you will, was given out, it was for single-family homes in the downtown area, so that they could have neighbors and guests visit them, and not have other people parking in front of their house that had a pass, for instance, to the train station area. So people that live near the train station qualified for these free stickers, and they can park on the street that's otherwise signed, stickers only. Otherwise, you couldn't park in front of your own house. It was certainly never imagined that 40R and 40B projects would qualify for pre-parking, but technically, right now, they do. We've had one 40R residential developed on Haven Street, they never asked. They have underground parking, they have more parking than they needed, so the questions just never came through. But as, since the PTTF came in to meet with you folks in the fall, we've met almost every week to prepare ourselves for January, and this is just one of the discoveries, that this is a loophole we'd really like the board, if you will, a loophole to close before January 1st. Because technically, if you don't make these changes, residents of 40B and 40R projects could come in and ask for free parking stickers. Now, what does that get you? Well, the board has changed what the sticker means over the years, so it doesn't get you access to the compost center, but there is parking more than just in the downtown that this would be eligible for, for instance, the tennis courts. So there are different sections of town that this sticker would potentially allow someone to park in. And again, all the developers were highly aware, went through two different sets of rigorous processes, depending on if it's 40R or 40B, to provide ample resident parking, so that there really should be no call for resident parking. And the two amendments in front of you are simply to close that off to the other projects for now.
So just to clarify, because you said resident parking and visitor parking, and these are different things, right? So resident parking should exist within the development, you know you are allocated one or two spots, depending on your arrangement with the property owner, and you as a tenant or condo owner. But the visitor one presents a different situation.
So the way that works is I, the homeowner, put my car with a sticker out on the street, and my visitors use my driveway. That's how you accommodate visitor parking?
For a single-family home.
For a single-family home.
How do we accommodate visitor parking for these developments?
That's their problem. That's, again, that's both the ZBA and CPDC went through processes. They require a certain amount of parking there, on-site, they provided those spaces. Will that work? No one knows till it happens. But again, certainly, the one on Haven Street has worked, but it's also difficult to say because of the public parking right behind there, so. But from my knowledge, the parking garage has extra spaces and always has since they opened, so there's not been a problem. I don't, I can't go through chapter and verse of the 40Bs and 40Rs currently, but they did go through the requirements for X number of visitor spaces.
So this change, because you said the Haven Street 40R never requested these, this change would not result in the revocation of any passes?
Correct. But it would also shut them off as well as anyone else.
Right, but just to be clear, it shuts them off from free sticker.
Correct.
They have access the way any other resident in town does to buy a sticker.
Yes, that's correct.
So I think it makes it more consistent.
And then depending on what we finally present to you in January, and it may take some time for you to decide, this may or may not become a moot point. But for now, since January 1st was approaching, we thought it was just important to close it off.
So to clarify, though, it means that people living in these buildings, once they are established, will be treated differently than single-family homeowners in the same area?
For the free stickers, yes. They will not get a free sticker.
Right. Is there any concern from a legal perspective that we are potentially discriminating against people living in these developments?
No, because, again, the developments have provided parking for residents and guests.
And if they didn't, then that's worse a.
If they did, it's a question of, did they do enough, and time will tell.
There's a formula they have to follow.
There's absolutely a formula that each board used. And again, depending on the clients that move in, you know, and the trends they have, you know, that may or may not work. From our past experience, somewhat to my surprise, more parking than has been necessary has been provided for some of these projects in our town, some of our neighbors. So cars are just becoming less of a thing with some of these, especially on transit-oriented dwell.
Yeah, I just saw someone walk from the train, from the train, and walk across the street and go right into the Met, you know, so. I don't know if that person even has a car.
Any other thoughts?
I'm comfortable with this.
I am, too.
Can I ask?
No, I can be covered by, um, about half right now, about half the residents take advantage of the free stickers, and so we get a lot of employees complaining, like, I can't park there, I bought the pass, but these homeowners are still there. So I think we're just trying to avoid that, especially down on High Street, where I think it would be the most prevalent of the Met and town.
Yeah.
Is it possible that, if anything is possible, with looking at the overhaul of the entire parking system, that this benefit might be taken away from the single-family homeowners?
It is possible. I don't really remember if we've discussed it that much, other than to put it on the table.
Right, we started to jump forward.
I don't think we've gotten too far.
Okay. To clarify, these, what are they called? Reading Community Access stickers? What do they get a residence? So they are able to park anywhere in the downtown area?
There's different places around town, with downtown being the biggest area, that are designated as residential, at certain hours, so it gets you that. It used to also get you compost center.
So it's that they don't get ticketed and confused for commuters?
Correct, for the downtown especially. But then in an area like the Birch Meadow tennis courts, you don't park in someone's front yard unless you at least have a sticker. So again, passports have had different discussions about the principle of all that as well. But the point is that the free stickers were really meant for the downtown people or the couple of other people that had, you know, for instance, you're in the Birch Meadow area, in the tennis courts, same thing. You own a house, you get a free sticker, you park in front of your house, your guests park in your driveway. Otherwise, tennis patrons might be parking in front of your house, and you wouldn't have a space to use, because it's marked resident-only. So we're only working on the downtown area, but just so you are aware, there are a few other areas in town. From my knowledge, is there always athletic recreation locations?
That's pretty much the residence and house space, yes.
Yeah.
So the implication here is that if you live in a development in these particular areas, you cannot do what single-family homeowners do, which is park in a street and have your guests park in your parking spot or driveway equivalent, right? And that's.
Well, in theory, the guests have other designated spots, and you at your single-family house may not have that option. You know, many, if you look at, I think there's two houses that have no parking at all.
Gold Street.
Yeah, Gold Street. But generally speaking, you might fit two cars in most of these driveways at most. And many people home two cars, so there really is no guest parking for a single family. This allows them to lie against, lie a car out and have someone visit. And again, in theory, the 40R and 40B have provided guest parking somehow, on-site.
We're still a little uncomfortable with the fact that we're treating people who are living in apartments differently than we're treating people who are homeowners.
I'm not sure I can fully follow that.
I get your, I get your point. But I get your point. I mean, there's, on the face of it, it does, it's treating people differently based on whether they rent or have a condo or own home. And, and, that said, I think that, I've looked at the number of these developments and how many cars they have to allot for their residents, and it's not the same as someone who has a short driveway. For instance, if my house were on, down by the train station, we'd be, I was about to use an inappropriate word, we'd be in trouble. You know, because I've got three adult kids, they come home every once in a while, and they have friends over, and where would we park? You know, my driveway only takes, like, two cars unless, yeah, pretty much two cars. And I think that's true for a number of the residents down around that area.
And the truth, the same would be true, so you're, I mean, the idea here is that if you purchase a home that has only space for one car or two, and you have four people over, the town is giving you an allowance because your driveway is limited. If you are in an apartment, however, and you are allocated the space designated by the developer, which is one space, possibly two, we're saying that, this request is saying that they are not allowed the same flexibility.
But those apartments will typically have fewer, will have guest spots, but you'll have fewer bedrooms, have fewer, the likelihood of fewer people in that above versus a single-family home that has multi-bedroom.
I see your discomfort.
The other piece is that you can, I believe, you can, as part of either a lease or purchase, negotiate over how many spots that you want to have included. So maybe possible with more bedrooms, you can get more spots that you would be purchasing.
It's still, they're still being treated differently. So I've said my piece, I won't repeat myself. I'm not comfortable with this recommendation. I think we are treating tenants differently than we treat homeowners, and I don't think that's fair. So, but I've said my piece.
Just to be clear, 40R and 40B have owners as well as renters, so it's not just simply renters, it's owners and renters in those projects.
Okay. Noted. Any other discussion?
Well, I wish you hadn't spoke up, because now it's complicated.
I guess, I still view it differently also, because allowing this changes the teeth of the requirement of parking to be provided by the builder. So if we're saying, hey, you have to have one and a quarter, but you know what? They can get spots on the street, so don't worry about it. I don't think that's okay.
I don't think it quite works that way.
I think it could very well work that way, yeah.
I don't think the developers of this particular building gave any concern to on-street parking based off of what their, I don't think they were knowledgeable in our parking permit.
I would agree, but I don't want to attempt to bring it up, and then that become a way that in future developments, people are saying, you don't really need to worry about that parking provision.
Well, we don't allow overnight parking four or five months out of the year anyway, so it can't really be used, I mean, I could lie, but it can't be used as a legitimate selling point, because we don't allow on-street parking. So if you're a resident, you know, your parking is what you get.
Yeah, I think, I've said my piece, too.
Yeah, is, just one more question. Is it, isn't the ratio fixed? Well, no, I think the ratio is fixed, right? Depending on.
40R is fixed at 1.25.
Yeah.
That's for owner-renter spaces, not guests. That's negotiable.
Okay.
And then for 40B, there's no such thing, whatever you discuss.
Right, so, and given that 40B could, it's, you know, from what I've read, or what I've tried to read up on 40B, if they could agree to a certain amount of parking and then not put that amount of parking in and appeal the permit and get the permit changed.
Yeah.
So, and that would be a driving factor. You know, if they said we can park in the street, you know, we're going to have them park in the street.
Yeah, I don't think we want to go there.
What's that?
I know what you're saying, but I think our fear is that we're like, let's say the Met is running, it would only be four houses there, so you have four families with free stickers, and now you're having 150 people with free stickers. So I think that's just our fear, is the sheer number of units in these buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, yeah, distinction, yeah. All right, if we're ready for the vote?
No.
Uh, wait, this is a hearing.
Close the meeting.
So we'll close the hearing.
Any other comments?
Hi. We lost all our people. All right.
So hang on, so we need, whoops.
So there's.
Special motion to close the hearing?
No.
Oh.
Uh, go ahead.
Move that the select board, close the hearing.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, there isn't. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, so we have two motions here, one for each suggested amended order.
Do you want me to read them?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Amendment Number 2019-12, date filed December 3, 2019, is what I'm looking at? Or do you want just the motions, simple motions? Okay, simpler. Move the Select Board to approve Safety Amendment 2019-12 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Opposed? Well, this is problematic. Move that the Select Board approves, oh, sorry, I stole your thunder, love it.
All right, move the Select Board to approve Safety Amendment 2019-13 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. So, so glad we cleared that up for you.
Yeah.
We can choose to revisit this once we have a full board.
Yeah.
So...
Well, and it's properly noticed.
So I'll leave that to you, feel free to add as appropriate to the agenda, so John can participate and we can break the time. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, thanks. Sorry we're so indecisive.
Oh, no, it's all part of the charge.
All right, so we've done the minutes. So, one of the things that we were talking about earlier in the evening was the Met.
Yes.
And Andy, you had mentioned something about the gas leaks meetings that I wanted to revisit, and I sort of tabled that to the end. So let's, yes, Bob?
Just on the gas leaks, Andy gave me a clue tonight that might help, but I had answered it, David and him. You have to be really careful meeting with vendors before you go through a procurement process.
I was going to, I was going to say David.
I'm just asking to table that until our procurement folks have a look at it.
Yeah.
The dollar price is important for that to go forward, so I'm just asking a whole lot still. No problem with, you know, the board saying Andy should go forward, but as I asked David, he was fine with it, just don't do it right away.
Okay.
Great, thanks for that clarification.
That was actually the, when Andy brought that up, I, like, I'm curious, all right, as long as, as long as all procurement rules are followed.
Yeah, yeah, and that's great.
Yeah.
But I guess the question is, does the, does the board want me to stay with this process or hang back?
Essentially as a liaison, basically?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'd like to be, meet with David and Town Manager and observe how this is all developed, so that I can really follow it and be fully informed on, you know, each, the phases and report back to the board, yes, as liaison of what's happening. Everything will be transparent, to the extent that it can be, you know, regarding contracts and procurement and so with that.
When I heard this, I mean, one of the things that, there's a couple of things that concerned me about us attending what amount of staff meetings, which is that it feels like it's beyond the scope of our responsibilities. You and I put this on the warrant as an article, it passed by town meeting, and at that stage, for any other article that gets passed, it is then handed to the Town Manager or appropriate personnel to then implement that article. So it, one of the things that worries me from, is that it sets precedent about how deeply we as board members are involved in the day-to-day functioning of town issues, right? Once, now that it has passed and the funding was allocated, it becomes an operationals, operations issue. And that is clearly within Bob's domain. And so, as far as being informed, I think, in my view, it would be appropriate to say, now the resident coordinates with Bob, if there are questions that arise, that they want to raise it to you or me, because we were more involved, or you who are more knowledgeable on some of the more details of it, then that would be fine. But I hesitate to have us attend, because then it does set the example that, once we pass something, we are there for all of these meetings, and I think that's practical. And it's starting to tread into Bob's territory. So I would be inclined to communicate whatever is necessary to Bob, and then hand it off to him.
Yeah, I get your point, and I certainly think this would, I don't want to see this as a precedent-setting issue, but I think this, this topic is, differs from others in that, that I've been going to the multi-town gas initiative meetings, I've been discussing the details of this with David Zeke, and so I've been sort of involved from the get-go, and I have, I think I have some knowledge on the topic that could be helpful, and so I'd like to stay involved to that extent.
But I think the question is, to stay involved as a private citizen, I don't think there's any problem at all. No issue. As a representative of the board is a different question.
Well, it's an issue as a resident, too, because residents don't attend staff meetings.
Right, yeah, and I, you know, it wouldn't...
David Zeke is unique here.
Right, I mean, it would be the Town Manager, I wouldn't be meeting with others. Although other towns in, you know, seem to, they find the best model is, you know, they have Select Board members integrated with DPW, with Town Manager, with volunteer groups, so they find a multifaceted approach helpful, so this, this wouldn't be unprecedented, I don't think.
I mean, specific to the gas leaks?
Yeah, yeah.
Bob?
This is certainly different, because it's not the typical business of town government this issue, so we don't have in-house expertise. Maybe the better solution is, and I don't usually like to do this, but the Town Manager forms a working group and invites Andy. That way the board has not spoken, but not said, "Oh, you will be our representative." I just decide David and Andy and whoever else has the right expertise, because I clearly don't have it, and I don't think our staff has it.
Yeah.
That might be one way to do it differently.
Yeah, I mean, if you're comfortable with that, Bob, I think that's fine. I mean, I, my hesitation here is that I want to make sure we don't tread into the micromanaging territory.
Yeah, and the one thing I can't answer today is, I don't know the procurement cross process we might have to go through, I don't know what happens after Phase 1. So, to be clear, you know, if I start a working group now, it's for something very specific that'll have to be outlined.
Right.
And it doesn't go beyond that, because I don't know, you know, what the rules and regulations would be after that. I think this first step, I don't know, I don't understand it as an expert, but I understand it from what David's told me. It's generally straightforward, however, if you're just going to start going either RFP, RFQ, or contract route, which I think you have to, it does get into legal specifics and technicals.
Yeah, and I would rely on that, right.
And I don't know if that, but David does.
So, that's, that's a great offer, Bob, but, you know, on the flip side, I also don't want to circumvent, circumvent the board by being assigned by the Town Manager to a working group. So I, it's up to the board, but I just don't want to feel like I'm doing an end run on you all.
I'm comfortable with that proposal.
I'll fire it up, too.
Okay. So the other item was the Met and where we stand there, so we sort of started the discussion, but we received a message from the developer saying that someone had asked for, someone from the board had asked for a meeting with him. I know that wasn't me.
It wasn't me.
Okay.
I can clarify.
Thank you.
This is one of those open meeting law, many-person emails.
Yes.
Mark had indicated, I think it was yesterday or the day before, that he wanted a lot more interest, so I said, "Well, let me see what parties might be available, and then I'll talk to Vanessa about adding this to an agenda." So then Gene reached out to Town Council as well as the developer, and that explains the first sentence.
Got it, okay, yeah. Because I, I know Andy and I had each been contacted, but I was just a little bit in the darkroom.
And some of your board members had interest in this, and some specifically did not.
Okay. So, I mean, I think at this point, you know, there's, the ZBA has this on their agenda, some edits, some amendments to the permit, the comprehensive permit for tomorrow. We're not clear on the details, a hearing has not been posted. I think at this point, it's a discussion because of that. Bob, can you correct me? Yeah, can you clarify?
You know, it's such a highly legal area, I want to say it's listed as a discussion. I don't think that prohibits them from making a vote.
I can look up.
But if, there's two sections, is it material and less material, whatever those things are.
Substantial and substantial.
Substantial, yeah.
Okay. If it's, if they decide whatever's on the table is a substantial change, they have to go through a different legal process, which does involve a hearing and notification of the voters.
But this particular discussion and vote of substantial and substantial doesn't require a hearing?
No.
It's under topics of discussion, other business, 35 Lincoln Street, proposed changes, is how it's listed on their agenda.
It doesn't give us any specifics about what the proposed changes are that are being requested. So, at this point, given, so, if the, depending on how the ZBA votes on these proposed changes, either, if they vote to approve the changes to the permit, then this board has no standing to ask the developer anything, because this is currently under the authority of the ZBA, I want to make that very clear. If the ZBA votes that they are substantial changes, or they choose to postpone it for whatever reason, then that's a different conversation. So I just, I want to make sure we stay in our swim lane here.
Mm-hmm.
Because the ZBA is involved.
Yeah, I, I sort of wasn't, I was, I agree, we have to stay out of the ZBA's business, you know, unless, you know, but, so I was just thinking of this as a, you know, a procedural issue from the town's point of view, non-ZBA, but from how the town operates to, I think it'd be good if the board in general had an idea, not just for this development, but for other developments, if they've had a history of not complying with, with the comprehensive permit, if the, if the, if the town, the town meeting, Town Hall, the planning division could request or require the builder to give as-built plans that can then be compared to the approved plans, or something like that. So, for example, the, the number of violations or discrepancies from the permit, comp permit that we've learned, seem to have come from, from some residents, at least from what I've seen. And this would be a way of taking that burden off the residents, number one, and, and just asking for some approved plans, like we do for the concrete pours. I wouldn't see this as any different. And so that it would be, we'd have a transparent process of what's been changed, and the board would be aware of that. And it would also...
It sounds more like, not necessarily for us to have the plans, because I think I should be, for everyone, want to say, not very few of us could actually read those plans accurate.
No.
But to understand, to have a report perhaps from staff to, so that they, the staff being the experts, could provide us with information on discrepancies.
Right, and to get, so my question was, can we, can the town require this?
I have, I have swim lane concerns here, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, we have swim lanes to observe also, and a 40B is very different from any other development that we see.
Yeah.
For anything but a 40B, we can do what you're talking about. For a 40B, we cannot. We've heard the complaints and the concerns of residents, the building commissioner, he's the only one that can do it, looked at the plan and said, "You know, you're right. Some of these things are not what was planned. You don't get your CO until someone tells me I can give it to you. I can't do anything, Gene can't do anything, he can only listen to the ZBA. That's 40B." So all the things you suggested could rightly go as a resident into the ZBA as suggestions, but I can't do anything and staff can't do anything.
So staff can't do anything unless a resident brings it to their attention?
Unless ZBA tells us to, for a 40B, only for a 40B, very different legal creature.
So I think there's, there's two things here that are happening in parallel. One is procedurally how staff in general handles making sure that developers are meeting the permit, the comprehensive permit, that's item one. And the second is what's happening specifically with this particular development, and how we can choose to handle that. So I just, I want to make sure we split these.
I guess my confusion comes in when, you know, we had an earlier meeting this year, within the past year, where they had built, they had did a concrete pour that was too close to the street, and that was not in keeping with the comp permit. And we didn't, that wasn't caught until after the building was four stories high. And, and Gene came in and said, you know, "This is how we're going to fix this moving forward, we're going to require these certified plans so that we can compare them and not allow them to build above concrete." So I assumed that, that was a fix for all developments. It wasn't specified that it was everything but 40Bs, so in other words...
That part is. And, you know, Gene drove me down and showed me, as soon as they put in the pavement, that it wasn't planned, and that was communicated to them. Again, a developer under 40B does not have to listen at all. The only leverage we have, and we happen to have at this point in time, is we have the CFO that he wants. So the building commissioner can deny that until the ZBA requires otherwise.
Right.
If for some reason, we hadn't noticed and the CO was issued, the town has no leverage, it can still go through the ZBA process.
Right.
But it's important to almost drop a lot of common sense at the door, if you will, respectfully of a 40B, because there are no rules.
However, the ZBA could choose to deny them...
Absolutely.
...the exceptions.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I, my question's not about the ZBA, my confusion is that, that we, you know, Gene presented this process that we'll use moving forward to get plans of the concrete pour, and then...
You can't stop a developer from doing something not on the plan until you see him doing it, and the thing they paved was done in one day.
But Gene, Gene said before allowing them to continue with construction, we would require, we're requiring these concrete pour plans.
Again, they're, they're doing something that's not on a plan, how could we stop that?
Once they've made the concrete pour, it was explained that we can stop them from building above ground level if they're not, if their concrete pour...
So they were supposed to have a landscaped area.
No, I'm not talking about that.
But that's the issue that's bothering me right now.
No, there are number, there are a number of issues, I guess...
I think, I think what you're asking for, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong here, is essentially a way of having a check and balance. So Gene's proposal for the concrete pour that you're talking about was, in order for the developer to advance to the next stage, they are required to submit that plan, which then are they able to overlap with the original plan and see if there's any discrepancies, so that it can be addressed earlier in the stage, as opposed to six months later when there's four, it's four stories tall. I think what you're asking is, are there additional checks we can put in place to ensure that they are in compliance? Now, the thing that they've done, though, is that some of these things are relatively minor, and yet they're a major nuisance. And so we can't possibly have a check for every single thing that they're required to do. So how do we then, what tools do we have at our disposal to first, ensure compliance, and second, address them when they don't comply? And that is one of the things that I feel we're missing at this point.
Yeah.
There's four times when the town has a tool for a project like this, the demolition permit, the foundation permit, the construction permit, and the certificate of occupancy.
And we've had problems at all of those levels.
I believe so. But the point is, if something, if they don't need something from us, we have no teeth to go after them. When they need something, then we can say... When they need something, then we can say, "Aha, now we have a point of a check and a balance and a system to use." In between, if we catch them doing something that's not the plan, we can mention it to them. And then the only thing we can do other than have discussions and have loud discussions is say, "You know, when you come back to us looking for that next step, it's not going to happen. You're going to have to go to the ZBA." We don't have any other... I mean, we can have discussions with people, and, you know, they can be agreeable or disagreeable, but we don't have a lot of legal mechanisms in this process to say, "All right, stop."
And I think part of it is not necessarily saying, "All right, stop," because this particular 40B is unique. We have not had, in my time in the last few years of watching these developments go up, have had nearly the headaches with other 40Bs that we have had with this one.
We don't have 40Bs typically. We have 40Rs or other.
So...
40Bs is unusual for us.
So... But we have others in various stages that have been more collaborative with neighbors.
Certainly the Eaton Lake who has been... But they've not actually done anything on site yet. So...
True. But they've been very... They've been willing to meet with them significantly in the lead-up to the development of the project. So...
So, let's carry it forward.
Go.
These folks are now willing to meet with us, and I think we should take advantage of it. And I think we should chat with them. And they seem very proud of what they're doing, and at least the letter indicates that they want to have a good relationship. And it may be that this is a carrot, not a stick resolution that takes place here. And I think it's worth having the discussion. It strikes me that everything we're talking about is owned by the ZBA.
Yeah.
Not us.
But then why did we... We had a discussion in this very room, I remember, about the concrete pour.
We'd catch it sooner. That's what would have happened.
And, yes, so the plan was that we require of developments, and it wasn't specified, but not 40Bs. If we can require a certified plan of the concrete pour before we allow them to go to the next level, why can't we require them to submit as-bills before we give them certificate of occupancy?
I think we probably can, but at the end of the day...
But Bob's saying we cannot.
I think we could.
If I'm correct.
The same way that it sounds to me like this is process, right? The same way that we're going to require the concrete pour descriptions, or, you know, whatever schematics you want, et cetera, we can require them. It would allow us to catch something that's not on plan sooner.
But Bob's saying we cannot do that.
Well, we're doing it per what Gene discussed. We're going to do that for our process. I'm sure we can change this process, too. And again, I think what it does is it catches issues earlier.
We can catch it. We might then have the...
I get all of that.
To like impose a sanction.
But we don't have... Let's say we withhold the permit.
Yeah.
They go to ZBA.
Yeah.
Let's say we don't withhold the permit, and there's an issue.
Yeah.
They go to ZBA.
Yeah.
The outcome doesn't change.
I'm not talking about ZBA. I'm simply asking whether we can require the same thing about the concrete pour before we give permission to go further with the project. Can we do the same thing for as-bills before we give the certificate of occupancy? And you say, "Yes," but I'm getting mixed messages here.
If they didn't want to comply, they'd go to the ZBA, right?
Yeah. I mean, Andy, you've posed it to me at least, specifically for this project, and that's how I've answered you.
Yeah.
If you're now asking a more general question for general projects, there's an answer. Of course, the town can step in and ask for things. But for this project, with this stage is in, it's not our swim lane, and it's not yours. And those have been my answers. We're specifically project-oriented.
So, when we discuss this project specifically and the concrete pour, Gene's solution was for every other project, but not for 40Bs?
Not for this one, and it already happened.
Yes.
To clarify, hold on.
Yeah.
But Gene's process will work future 40Bs?
Correct.
Thank you. So, it's just... It's to catch it, right?
Yeah.
But we can't do anything about what they did with this one.
I agree.
And I... But for future ones, it does... Gene's concrete pour plan procedure will apply to 40Bs as well as other builds.
They don't have the certificate of occupancy.
Is that true as well as other... I thought you said it was only 40Bs for the concrete pour.
She can do that for 40Bs.
As well as others.
As well as others?
Not as well, but in addition.
I think others are under the authority of CPDC, so it's a little bit different.
Yeah. But my point is that we can... Why can't we do the same thing before issuing... We have the certificate of occupancy that would need to be issued to them. Why can't like the concrete pour plan and let them go to the next step? Why can't we see the as-bills so we know what they've changed before we give them a certificate of occupancy?
And by "we," do you mean us or the staff?
Yeah.
The staff.
If the staff can do that.
But it wouldn't necessarily be the ZBA, right? Because the whole point is that the building inspector is the one who gives the certificate of occupancy.
Well, at this point, again, he shut down the CFO...
Right.
...until they comply. Now, they could skip the ZBA process entirely and do what he says, which is, "Here's the plans. Do what it says." They've chosen not to, I think, and at least couldn't have a discussion with the ZBA, and we'll see what happens. But we can't require this developer, which is the questions you've asked, do any of these things you've mentioned?
Provide these plans?
No.
As-built plans?
It's up to... It's in the ZBA's hands right now.
But wasn't it in the ZBA's hands for the concrete pour?
Yes. And what Gene suggested was not for this project, was for other projects.
Including 40Bs?
Including other 40Bs.
Other 40Bs. Yeah, I guess...
I mean, this is... Are you asking for this project or for a future 40B?
This and future. So, we didn't catch the concrete pour, and they built it up. But we know now that, in hindsight, that could have been fixed by requiring concrete... Certified concrete pour plans. I don't understand why the building inspector can say, you know, "In order to get your certificate of occupancy, please present your as-built plans so I can take a look and see if it matches what's in the comprehensive permit."
So, actually, this brings up a good point, right? So, there's a couple of things that have been flagged, but they've been flagged by residents, right? And based on that information, the building inspector...
No, that's not entirely true. Staff has noticed.
Staff has noticed.
Absolutely.
So, I think Andy's point is, jump in here if I'm wrong, which is that it is possible that there are other changes that developer made so that the as-built plans and the original comprehensive permit are different, that perhaps haven't been flagged yet. So, to Andy's point...
I think at this point, staff has been through these documents thoroughly, and there is no such other thing. That I can say for sure.
So, the answer to the email from the resident about Bollard lightings and lighting for the sidewalks?
Julie and Mark Dupfall, the building commissioner, have been through that document stem to stem.
Through the...
Through the email, through the plan that was submitted, through what has actually happened, and has a full accounting of that for the ZBA tomorrow night. What the ZBA determines is, again, substantial or insubstantial, I guess the word is, is up to them. What the building commissioner says, all I know is, it's not what you said you were going to do. I got to stop it.
And we don't know what changes they're requesting.
Well, we... I don't know. I'm sure the building commissioner knows, and I'm sure the ZBA knows. Now, will they come in and have a different discussion tomorrow night? I can't say. I don't know for sure how that works.
Okay. All right. So, as far as how we want to handle next steps, it's in the ZBA's hands, and I think we need to see how that process plays out.
I was not implying that we interfere with the ZBA.
Agreed. Agreed. And I think as far as what actions we as a board can take, the answer at this point is none.
Yeah, I don't get the logic, but that's fine.
I'm questioning about why. I understand that in this... With this particular development, the certificate of occupancy has been withheld pending either compliance or granting of a variance by the ZBA. So, was that... You know, we didn't have the as-built... The building inspector didn't have the as-built plans, but as you said, Bob, there's no... Everything is now known in terms of how it's...
Yeah. And I don't want to agree that they don't have the as-bills. I don't know what they do and don't have. I'm not the expert at that. I know they feel they have all the information they need for the ZBA to be presentative.
Is it... I was... In other contexts, or with other developments, has... Is the same kind of review... Are you confident that the same kind of review is undertaken in terms of the granting or withholding of a certificate of occupancy such that there wouldn't be anything missed in terms of what was in compliance or not in compliance?
Yeah, generally speaking, I mean, for things you can see, that's pretty easy, such as paving over where there should have been landscaping.
Right.
For something behind a wall, well, but we have inspectors that work with them all, you know, along the way, and then do get as-bills along the way. If the building landscaping be differently, usually get an as-built landscape. So, again, you're getting into a technical area that I know some about, but I don't want to step out of my lane either.
So, one of the things that now has come up, and the reason we're talking about it now, is the developer has reached out and said, "We understand the board wants to meet." Is that something... Is that something that we want to post and have multiple of us, a quorum of us attend? Or is it something where one or two of us are assigned to meet with the developer, have a conversation about the issues that we've been dealing with, and address it that way?
I've met with the developer in the past, yes, as you have. And I was given promises and assurances that were not fulfilled. So, I don't... Like, you know, I feel I have... If we can't require as-bills to see what the differences are and get a handle on it, that's where the truth is, not what people, you know, he said, she said, all that. If we can't ask for that like we can concrete pours, then they'll do what they want to do, and, you know, we won't get any information on it.
So, I guess I'm more both fatalistic and opportunistic about this. Fatalistic is, there's not much we can do in control of what's happening here. At the same time, we have some very upset residents who are peppering emails and other things in our direction, indicating their discomfort, right? I think that we've got a developer who is willing to have a chat. I most definitely would not restrict it to these two issues that are going on. I would hope it's more of a relationship with the board in general, which we should have with all the different developments in town. And there have been some specific issues where I think there are at least some of us who feel promises were made and not carried forward. And I think that's open to the discussion, but I would hope that their view is to kind of, you know, how... Wherever we are, we are. How can we kind of build a better relationship? Because it's a strained relationship.
So, might I suggest... I know, Andy, you've had previous conversations with them. I've had some, a couple as well, but Mark is fairly new to this conversation. Would the board feel comfortable with Mark and I meeting with the developer?
I don't know. I think if we wanted to meet with the developer, we should do it as a whole board, and it should be public.
I think that would be a less fruitful conversation, just going to be honest.
It would be a transparent one.
Which isn't helpful if it doesn't get us anywhere.
Yeah. I mean, I think that...
And we've had them here.
Yeah.
Multiple times.
With the specific issues, those can actually be addressed at a public meeting of the ZBA.
Yeah, I think that's also a problem. It's just... That is precedent-setting, that they've had a liaison for the project. I've done my best to address residents' concerns, and really, when... At the end of the day, it comes down to the residents, and they're someone who will look out for their investments in their homes, which is probably the biggest investment they have. And that's how I've come at this. So, if the board decides that, okay, you can get a different liaison, essentially, that's maybe more open, or... Yeah, you can choose your liaison.
I don't think we're moving ahead here anymore.
No.
I think we're stuck in a rut.
I mean, we have the opportunity to speak to the developer. They... He's reached out to us. I say we take it.
But he's willing to meet with the entire board. That would allow citizens, residents, to come and speak their mind, which they should be able to.
They can do it at the ZBA. A public hearing.
Does the process allow for that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. But we also represent those residents and their interests, and...
But the problem is, we don't have standing. I think that's the reality. That's the conclusion I'm coming to. We don't have standing here.
So, then, how will we get more standing if we do a relationship at building with a developer who has demonstrated a couple of times to really change what was in the plan, what was agreed to?
Not our purview, unfortunately. That's the drag, and that's the problem.
Right. So, we can listen and do nothing else. That's the problem.
So, there are a couple of things that I think are really concerning. One is that if the process allows the ZBA not to post publicly kind of all the things that are going on in advance and make a decision that could have a big impact, that doesn't seem right. That doesn't seem like that's the way the process should work. So, I wonder if that's actually right. And if it is, we should kind of see what's going on. The other thing, and Anne, I'm going to lean on you on this one. I know that Bob said we haven't had a lot of 40Bs playing through here. Our observations, my observation of Wakefield with 40Bs, I don't know if they've had more experience or not, but they had some different experiences and seemed to be working in different ways. Casual observation.
They certainly, I feel like, put the developer through, you know, come back to us with revise the plans in this way, revise the plan in this way, in that way, and they, you know, they were continuously tweaking the project to...
Maybe they have more 40B experience or whatever, but maybe it could be helpful to us.
Yeah. Just bear in mind, that's what happened with this project and the ZBA a couple of years ago. It was lots of meetings. It happened over many, many months. Lots of back and forth, come back. So, I don't know if Wakefield's doing it much differently than us. I can't say. But just so you know, that did happen.
Yeah. So, it may be that that's how it goes in the beginning, and then you get down to the practicality of it, and things are out the window.
So, is it from the as... The question about the as-bill plan seems like it's probably... Because this is the... Because the Lincoln Prescott question is before the ZBA tomorrow. It sounds like the... And the certificate of occupancy has been withheld.
Yes.
It sounds like the question of whether as-bill plans should be requested or required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy may be more relevant when we're talking about future 40B projects, or when the... Before something is issued, because it seems like in this case, the certificate of occupancy has been withheld, that issues have been flagged, and that the certificate has been withheld. Are you concerned that they're going to be... That it could be, in this case, issued, but we won't really know what's happening?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think that's... I think the die is cast here, so I'll give...
But I wonder, actually, though, for future 40Bs and that... The question of the as-bill plans, if it would be... It would be... If it would be useful to hear from the building inspector as to whether that would be helpful to do that comparison and to flag to its issues.
See, Bob nodding his head, so...
Yeah, I would think so, he's the expert.
Yeah. So, back to, so that's the as-built permit relative to issuing the occupancy permit. We still have the question before us of whether or not we speak with the developer. I think we should pursue that, because, well, really, there's...
Nothing to lose.
Yeah.
Capacity things to gain.
Again, they've offered to meet with the board, and, and, you know, I think we should meet with them as a board, but...
What if we do that, and then if it seems like more follow-up is required, we could designate a liaison, or not designate, or...
Another working group.
We could, we could take, we could meet, we could invite them to come before the board, and then...
There is a timing that's under here, which is that the ZBA meets tomorrow.
Right.
Even if they continue it, I don't know if they'd continue it until December, or if they continue it until January. I don't know when they were hoping to occupy the building, so any discussion that happens with the developer needs to happen very quickly.
The next ZBA meeting's December 18th, and there is room on their agenda, I can't say what they will or won't do, though.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it would really make sense for us. I don't think we should meet, any of us, personally, I don't think any of us should meet with the developer before they go before the ZBA. I don't think that that would be...
I don't think that's possible anyway.
Possible or really appropriate, because there is this, you know, in terms of sensitivities about lanes. I mean, the, there is this, this is before the ZBA tomorrow. I don't think it would be appropriate for us to insert ourselves in meeting with the developer before, before that takes place.
But I wouldn't be able to anyway.
Yeah.
So, okay, I think we've beaten this dead horse. Are we comfortable with waiting to see what the ZBA does tomorrow night? And then, based off of that, either decision or continuance, Andy, are you comfortable with Mark and I reaching out to the developer and sort of seeing if we can negotiate something?
As I said, my preference would be if we want to meet, if they want to meet with the board, they meet with the board. Negotiations, you have no negotiating power.
Yeah, I don't think it's an negotiation.
Okay, discussion. I don't know what that means, so discussion. I mean, we understand we don't have leverage, but a conversation is better than nothing, right? I mean, if we do nothing, we're throwing our hands up.
I think that if the focus of the conversation is specific to these two issues, there's no reason to do it. There's no value.
Right, and with...
Nothing we can do, there's no reason for them to, to do anything.
Yeah.
I don't, that's not, I guess, my concern was that, again, we have residents that have expressed a lot of concerns. It is in ZBA's territory, they need to kind of go through the specifics of that. How we work with ZBA in any way, shape, or form is an interesting question, particularly as it relates to different kinds of projects. Maybe that's a discussion we want to have at some point with the ZBA also.
I think I'd agree.
And specific to this developer, though, I think that there are big...
There is something.
Open town.
There is something. We do somewhat have a point of leverage. I am hesitant to say it now. It's not necessarily anything that would... There is a talking point we could use. But doing it in an open meeting is not, I don't, I think that, that far.
My concern is, to, to create a forum that can't result in any action doesn't make any sense.
But it might result in action.
I'm saying that a public meeting.
Agreed, agreed.
Entire board, I can't see how that...
I wouldn't suggest we...
Moves anything anywhere.
...have a full board discussion.
In any way, shape, or form.
We've had them, and they haven't gone well.
Yeah, I don't see that as valuable.
Whereas, a private conversation may yield different results.
I mean, it is a different board than the last time they came before, the board.
Yeah, I mean, previous, I remember they were in once before, and as I recall, John spoke to them about, I forget the specifics, and I don't want to speak for John, but he had some concerns that he expressed.
And it didn't yield any results.
And it didn't, and I, you know, the, that's why, you know, I think if we, if, I think the ship sailed, I don't, I, I don't know, I don't, respectfully, I don't understand why we couldn't have gotten the as-bills like we could have gotten the plan.
We're past that, Andy.
But if we don't, because we don't have, let me finish, if I may.
Andy, we have, we are moved past the as-bills.
Yes.
At this point, we need to determine if we are having a conversation with the developer. That's, at this point, I mean, it's, we've been talking about this for a half hour.
Yeah.
So, are we comfortable with a couple of members meeting with the developer or not? Because if we choose no, and, and history has demonstrated that a public meeting is unproductive, then what we're saying is that all complaints of the residents are going to be unaddressed, that we are essentially giving up in working with this developer. And that is not the kind of board I want to be.
Yeah, my, my point is, I wasn't trying to revisit the as-bills. My point is, without the as-bills, I don't know what kind of discussion you can have with them, because you don't know what they've done that's consistent, and what they've done that's not consistent, where you could negotiate.
Bob has already addressed that issue, the staff has already looked into that portion of it.
And we can't, we don't control it. Having it would be helpful, I would imagine, to the ZBA, certainly the building inspector, many of these things would.
And they may have it, we don't, we don't know.
Unfortunately, there's not much we can do formally, and I would try informally, and...
So, are you comfortable with Mark and I reaching out to the developer and just having a conversation with them?
So, I would say that I am comfortable with any member of the select board reaching out to anyone about anything, but I don't know that, I, it does feel a little bit funny with Andy as liaison to the project to have you do, for, have the two of you do so as representing the board. If Andy is our liaison to the project, so I feel like you should feel free to do so, but I wouldn't say that you are like, that you were doing so representing. I think in your own, in your own personal capacities, and in your own capacities as elected officials, but not speaking for the board as a whole. Because I don't really know, I don't know what you have in mind for this conversation, so, that's fair.
Yeah, I, I'm comfortable with that, too.
So, how do we respond?
You and I will respond separately.
Okay.
Okay, we have gone through our agenda, and then some...
Not completely.
So, what? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, and one more topic I want to talk about that's on future agendas. Well, we just spent well over 45 minutes on this, actually closer to an hour, just as an FYI.
Talk fast.
I think that the issue that the chief brought up, the fire chief brought up, is very important in terms of occupancy issues, and it may be more holiday-specific or special event-specific or something like that. And I would, I know we talked about throwing it to a future agenda. This is an example of where I'd like to throw it to a specific agenda, set a time to do it, as opposed to kind of just, sometime we'll get to it. So, I would suggest that it may be a good, if there's an issue like this that may come up again around the holidays later in the month, then I'd suggest we address it before that. If that's not so much an issue, then I think we ought to hit it in January.
So, Mark, I think that, I think that's a great topic that you brought up. Bob, given this sensitivity, especially around buyers, is there something that we as the board can be helpful to you in supporting those efforts to enforce occupancy limits? Or is this something that the staff would like to take stab at first?
I really, as I mentioned earlier, it's an unusual issue, we really need legal advice first. I can't honestly answer your question.
Okay, so, Mark, would you feel comfortable with letting Bob take the lead on this one, and then, as he sees fit, put it in front of us at the most prevalent agenda that works for him and legal counsel?
Yeah, could I just suggest that, let's assume it's January, unless, one, we hear something different from legal, and two, if the chiefs indicate that there's an issue still later in this year, then I think we ought to get ahead of it, not behind it. In other words, if it's going to come up in late December.
January, February, just...
That's fine, that's fine.
Yep.
That's fine.
So, Bob's in your form.
Yep.
All right.
If we can, Bob, do you know if we, if we have to renew alcohol licenses, is it like, once they have...
But you don't have to renew them in the month of December.
Right, but if we do, you know, are we, is there some sort of expectation or obligation, legal obligation, that we would have to renew it for a certain establishment?
If you don't renew, they no longer have a legal license.
Right.
And they will take legal action.
And they will take legal action.
Yeah, no, we have to renew.
Right, and I think we can't hold up other people's licenses for...
No, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that.
That's one of the legal answers, I don't mean...
But this does worry me, as you remarked. I would also, Vanessa, if, if I may, I was hoping that we could have in a future agenda, maybe January, February, discuss, a discussion of some of the instructional motions passed by town meeting, you know, considering making this a green community.
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that we put, I'm going to put something like green community on the retreat agenda.
Okay.
And maybe we make a retreat, maybe. Maybe we make a retreat agenda, a standing one, where it's a quarterly meeting or something of that nature. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, now, can we have a motion to adjourn?
One.
Motion to adjourn.
Several people asked tonight in public comment if we could put the...
Yeah, Bob has it on the list.
Okay, thank you.
I have a big list from tonight.
Okay, great, okay.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Wait, we didn't have a discussion.